Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, four P M. School Board Workshop, and I just want to welcome all that are in attendance today. And you can see we have a little bit different venue for those that are online watching. And we're very proud to be able to hold our workshop here at the New Media Center in the addition of the the Kansas High School. And earlier today, we had a ribbon cutting outside where we actually called our meeting to order out there. And we did all of our ceremonial stuff out there, so we're going to be skipping that for today's lives, just so you know that we did honor our country through National Anthem and our Pledge of Allegiance. And so to get our meeting started here, we are going to start with roll call. If we'll just start down at the end of the table, please.
Lauren Ramirez, present. Janie Reddy, present.
Derek Lawrence, present.
Kristy Chung.
Wolfbury, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, so that will lead us on here to additions or changes to the agenda. Are there any?
I do not have any.
Okay, so then therefore I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda as stated. I have a motion from Ms. Chung.
Second.
And a second, was it Ms. Reddy?
Yes, sir.
All the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, hearing none, we will move forward with today's agenda. So now we have a public comment. Do we, we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No one's signed up for public.
Okay, so then we will move on to our first order of business today, which is our finance consent.
And. Good afternoon, Chairman, for board members and Superintendent Moore.
Welcome.
Ms. Whitmore and myself, I care to answer any question that you have on finance consent items.
Okay, well, we'll start with seven point zero one, and this is approval of Imagine Charter School financials. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the financials as posted in board docs? Okay, so hearing none, we will move forward with seven point zero two. Request for board approval of purchase orders over ten thousand. Do we have any questions for staff on any of these purchase order items?
Just for one, just because of the sheer nature of the P O, if we could just talk a little bit about the the Apple procurement and what that's for and how we procure that and the long range plan for middle school and high schools related to that.
Sure, and I'll ask Mr. Reeves to come up so he can elaborate on that.
Good afternoon, Board. You have two purchase orders that are on the board agenda this evening. One is for iPads, and that is for a refresh of our elementary that's important in fifth grade that is targeted. That would follow up from last year's refresh that was done for third, first, second, and third. The other purchase order is for MacBook Airs. Those are targeted for refresh for our high school. Those will begin targeted at our freshmen in tenth grade. And then we'll be coming back to you next year with the follow up for those. So those were done in two sections, and then our elementary is done. And then next year, you'll also see when we come back to bring forward refresh for our middle schools as well.
With the current increase in tariffs and potential further increases, are we going to be at jeopardy where we won't be able to supply the required number? How large of an impact is that to the budget to provide these items?
So, so far, this has not impacted this latest round of purchases. So we were working with, with our partners at Apple to kind of get these things lined up so that we could avoid some of those. I can't say, you know, what this looks like, you know, in several months. But we are in a good position based off of what traditionally what we've seen with pricing. We were able to do some negotiation with them as well. You'll see on those purchase orders that they are actually the M fours, which were just released. And so we ended up looking at the two of them, vice versa, and were able to basically get pricing pretty close to where the previous M two models were prior to them being released for their education.
So would you negotiate, is that just for that batch? Or is it like, hey, this, this price is negotiated for the next two years?
It's really transactional, transactional.
Okay.
So we're able to work with them to some extent on what those, on what those dollars, dollar amount come to. So those do include cases as well as some of the Apple Care products as well to help cover some of the damage.
So fourth and fifth and nine, ten, right? Refresh for my.
Right.
I just have a comment, so not a question, but, and just so for the publics, we're so, I met with Ms. Carrie, and we have, we have really great district staff that's been working on grants. So if you see on the P O, like, the public's looking solution tree, so, I mean, quite like fourteen thousand dollars. Tesco trainers, twelve thousand dollars, so, like, for Benella Elementary. So I think that's really great that we have staff that is going and looking on these grants to help bring back into our campuses. So that was, you know, I haven't seen a lot of that, so thank you for bringing all that.
I did have a question, if you could just to clarify what, on page six of nine, the Imagine Schools for one hundred and thirty-six thousand, I believe it is, five forty-four. There's a lot of breakdown in that description.
That is the I D E A grant, so I will ask Dr. Holliday to come up and speak to that purchase order.
Could I ask you one thing? Yeah, it's, it's our proportionate share. It's all of the pieces that we're, we're required to provide to, to imagine, feel that they are on a charter school.
Is that just, is that just a, a, a standard allocation that's just passing through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha, all right. That's all I have, thank you very much, that was an easy one. Any other questions on this agenda item?
Just a comment for the gates for Beltar Elementary and Indian Trails. So a while back, I know Plant Services was piloting like a, a great safety gate. So it looks like we'll be getting those in there for Indian Trails, F P C, Beltar, and then Transportation. So that's great for security for our kids, so I'm glad to see that happening and things are moving through, so.
Okay, so now we'll move on to seven point zero three, approval of vendor payments. There's not, not any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the Daytona State College. I think that's for diploma plus for our students going to Daytona and other colleges as well. And just wanted to maybe get Mr. Reeves to talk a little bit about this process. And I want to ensure, what I'm really getting at here is I just want to make sure that there's not any potential where our colleges, where our students are going from here, that they're potentially, the colleges are getting money from the state, but we're also having to pay money as well without them having any skin in the game. So that may not be the case, however, I do want to talk a little bit about that to make sure that our dollars are being spent appropriately. Because I believe in the diploma plus, this is not what this question is about. This is making sure that there is not, you know, additional funds going to our, our colleges.
Certainly, Board.
Superintendent Moore.
So we've had a long relationship, as established through D O E, with state colleges and Daytona State would be our college. And so when our students are doing enroll at their sites, it's usually where it's a pass through. And a few years ago, so, so those monies and textbook monies go in that direction for our students to cover those costs. Years ago, Ms. Bossardette and I worked through a process to make sure that students were not taking a full load, that we were making sure they were taking courses within our district for a number of reasons. One, to make sure they're tied and anchored to a, a high school just for the culture and atmosphere of that, but also to take courses on our campus and it helps retain revenue. And so those are some of the things that we put in place to help with that. In addition, when we offer D S E courses on our campus, not everything is passed through. There's a portion of that that does stay within our district. We stand up a number of courses like student success, research here in particular, there's college hours, there's college trade, which are offered at the Kansas High School. So not all those dollars go to D S E, those, some of that dollars are meant to be with us.
What's the, like, if a student were to go to D S E and pay out of their pocket, the, the cost per credit hour versus the amount we're paying them, is that less than equal to their cost per credit hour?
It's a pass through, it's, it's whenever their credit hour's cost goes, goes directly through us to Daytona State College. And so.
The district pays it though, not the student.
Correct, correct.
But they cannot charge in excess of their credit hour, is what you're.
Correct.
Correct, and that's for, let me just give it as to, if they take courses in the summer, we do not pay for that. If students were to take D S E courses during the summer, that's on them. We reimburse during the academic year, fall and spring.
Okay, so, just going back real quick, so have there been in the past where we were ever in certain, any sort of M O U with the colleges where they, we had a discounted, discounted rate or anything like that that we know of, has that ever occurred in the past?
Each year, we identify what the cost is, and that is what is on that, that contract. As you remember, when Mr. Reeves came before you for every riddle, we made the adjustment for what we did not use in the agreement in order to ensure that we are paying for what our students are actually taking.
And we're up for renewal of our articulation agreement for this year for, usually for a year span. So we'll be getting that in the next coming weeks, and we'll be reviewing that data and information and making sure everything's accurate and correct.
And that will come before this award.
That is correct.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
Okay, there aren't any other questions, we'll move on to seven point zero four. This is a board approval for deletion of inventory. All right, so hearing nothing, we will move on to seven point zero five. Request board approval of finance budget amendments. Okay, so hearing nothing, we will move on to seven point zero six. Request board approval of district financial statement. Okay, and we will move on to seven point zero seven. Request board approval of financial and federal audit report.
I would just like to make a few comments on this item. This is our fiscal audit for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. It is audited the other year by the Auditor General's Office from the state. They look at all of the financial data as well as our federal audits. They're required to audit a certain amount of federal grants each year. It has to make up twenty-five percent of our total grant funding. And they rotate the grants that they actually audit. It's usually always Title One, I D E A, and school food service. Previously, it was the S R grants, but with those gone, they're now back to their normal rotation of, of grants. In the, in the board docs in seven point oh seven, I have just added some financial highlights from the audit. The overall story of it is, is a very clean audit. The gist of it is what is presented by myself and Ms. Whitmore in September for our annual financial report remains the same. There are no audit adjustments that the auditors needed to be made, which is what we strive for. There are no findings in this audit. It is something that the district should be, you know, very proud of. It's a, it's a very good audit report.
Absolutely, kudos to you. They, if you, if anybody out there wants to find a quick way to go to bed at night, it's reading this audit, but it is in depth and they dig into everything. And, you know, even to the methods of how they do this investigation. And to be able to manage these funds with the ever-changing landscape, especially in the last two to three years of how school financing has gone, is a testament to your skill. And so I would just like to hear from you in terms of what do you attribute some of these, this successful audit to? What do you need to ensure that we continue to have clean audits of this nature? And know that we're spending the, the money according to all of the regulations and restrictions that are placed on us.
Sure, thank you for the compliment, and also thank you for the questions. I was thinking, wow, Mrs. Reddy really read this report from beginning to end. Thank you for that, and I'm sure you slept well. I will say, you know, the biggest thing, and Carrie, chime in here if you have anything to add, is consistency, especially in personnel with, with finance. Carrie and I, every time we hire someone, we are very big about saying, you know, we can train you on anything, but we can't teach personality. We can't teach culture, we're very big with our culture. So I think getting the right group together in, in the finance department and keeping them and maintaining them. Training is a big thing, the ability for Carrie and myself and some staff to go to the permanent trainings throughout the state during the year, depending on who works on what. Sometimes, like, we have a training coming up, a, a big finance state training that will take, Carrie's planning to take one or two people for a day because it's very pertinent to what they do, and they're training on something new. And she has this opportunity with, with a, with a contractor that's going to really help them get trained in this new area that they're learning. So I think just the, the ability to be able to, to continue to learn. We have a really good relationship with our Auditor General's Office, the supervisor of the Auditor Generals. I used to work for them years ago, and he was my supervisor back then. So we maintain a really good relationship. So if we have questions about anything, we can always rely on them. I was just on the phone with him today about some new Gatsby standard coming out, and we are just bouncing things back and forth. Obviously, the support of a superintendent who knows the importance of making sure things are kept tight so we can stay within our means and make sure that we can produce a, a decent fund balance that the board's going to be proud of and within their limits every year. That's, that's key too. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I would just say just professional learning for our staff, really keeping them engaged is huge. You know, they support us a lot, so just having the ability to do that with them is, keeps them engaged and just consistent.
And there are several different directors or chiefs that really tie into this as well, especially with sales tax fund and the one point five mil and the grants with Tammy York. There's, there's a lot of collaboration, and again, those names I just mentioned, there's a lot of consistency with those names and how long we've been in this school district.
Well, that was my next question, Ms. Moore and Ms. Moremac. What, what is your confidence in our ability to maintain the talent and have a continuity there, right? Ms. York has been here, I can't remember the school district without you in here, so, right? You've been here forever, and, you know, while we cherish that, we don't want you going anywhere. But we've got to make sure that we're going to be able to keep this continuity and not have a dip when transitions take place. So if you could speak a little bit about that.
Yeah, I think for us, one of the things that we've worked on over the last two years is making sure we have standard operating procedures so that as individuals do leave, we're not, you know, scrambling at the end trying to figure out their role and what they're doing. Because the reality of it is, is one day, Ms. York will retire, not anytime soon, but she will, and so we need to make sure. So we need to make sure we have standard operating procedures. I am confident that we still offer a, a great organization for people to work for and that our salaries are, are, are still competitive in order to draw individuals in. And so I'm, I'm confident in our ability to keep the workforce that we have, as well as make adjustments for individuals as they are retiring or electing to do something different.
And you guys provide opportunities for other staff in the financial department to maybe shadow and upskill because you could be an accounting C P A, but all of the special rules. And yes to this, no to this, and maybe this, that is something that's very difficult to just hire for, right? Without building that institutional law.
Sure, Carrie and I have consistently rotated responsibilities at least every two, probably about every two, two and a half years so that everyone's cross-trained. So if somebody does leave, we're not in a lurch, so that has worked out really well for us. The way our department is structured is our department secretary acts based on the job, the job description as a secretary, but also kind of like an accountant based on their duties. So we are unique in a way that we can hire someone in at the secretary, but promote them throughout our department. So they always have room to move up, so we're really fortunate to have that to, to, to go with. So based on the way we have structured our department, we're able to retain, nobody's really stuck in a position. There's always, you know, room for movement. There are several different conferences throughout the year. Obviously, Carrie is very good about making sure that if we, if we are going to send someone, it's going to be a very strategic choice to make sure it's, it's, it's going to benefit them. So we have continued to do that over the years, always making sure, of course, with, with cost, making sure that it's, it's not going to be a waste of money that they're going to learn something from it.
Great, well, thank you so much to you and your whole team for really stellar audit.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And it shows, and, you know, just, just to kind of go back in time, you know, when I first came on the board back in twenty-two, you know, our, our fund balance had gotten down to a very critical, dangerous place where we were very close to the point where the state could potentially come in and take over our books. And the board at that time gave strong direction to get those reserves up to the, the, the requirements by our board policy. And by you moving things around and prioritizing, I believe now we, we were at a nine percent of recent accounting, which that was a monumental feat to get it from where it was, from like three to, you know, to nine. And if, if we hadn't done that, we would probably be in a world of hurt right now. As you, you will see in the media and in our numbers, that our enrollment numbers are, are down right now, and that's going to affect our, our fund balance significantly this year. So kudos for making sure that we had those numbers to offset that.
Thank you, and I would just reiterate again, it's not that kind of position in making that happen. It's not just finance, that includes the chief of operations, you know, Jay Freeman, Corey Bullish, Ryan Deason, Tammy York, and especially the support of our superintendent that knows how critical those numbers are. So it is a, a well-oiled machine.
Absolutely, you guys are a great team, thanks for coming together on that.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, the training so that school board members are able to get. So they talked about, like, the I R S. It's easier to convince the I R S to change anything or, you know, any type of reporting. But for this audit report, I mean, it is it. So for what you guys have done, I mean, like, great work, because I know it's a lot in.
Yeah, there's no leverage, we have no, no leverage.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, like, they were very, I mean, you can't, I mean, this is it. So the I R, it's easier to work with the I R S than the auditors. So congratulations, and I will say, like, with the budgeting that, like, for meetings for school board members, they continue to have those trainings, and like, the last one, they had members that were in their third and fourth term. Like, and they're like, yep, things are always changing, and it's just like, things just change and change and change so every year. So I know, I'm glad to see you guys are, like, going to those trainings, like, those different ones for your group, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that, we're going to move on now to academic services, nine point zero one, and we have Ms. York.
That was a good segue as I come to the contract.
Yes, right? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Superintendent. I've come before you today to ask for approval for the Agtech contract. This is an annual contract with an agency out of Seminole County. They are an independent, but they are part of Seminole County Schools. And we actually contract with them to provide technical assistance across all of our federal programs. And one of the reasons that we can have such great audits is because my staff is diligent about attending all of their trainings. We reach out when there are questions, when regulations are changing, whether it be at the state level or federal level. They are always advocating for us and keeping us up to date on all of those changes. If we have questions, I can pick up the phone and call and say, hey, it's Tammy, can, can we get on the Zoom this afternoon? And so they do a lot of technical assistance and support as well as training. I've been taking all of my staff, rotating them through, because as the superintendent alluded to, I am in drop. And so someone is going to have to sit in my seat within the next few years. So just trying to make sure that I am training my staff. I know you say no, but I'm going. Trying to, to bring my staff up to date, and, and with all of the changes, and I will say with CARES and CARES, Gears, S R, all of the post-COVID issues that we've gone through, it really put a, a strain on my department, but we, you know, we trudged along, we did well. And it really didn't allow us the time to be training as much as, you know, you can't train the work when you're so busy doing the work. So now I'm having to backtrack, and so this contract is integral to being able to make sure that my staff have the level of companies, competency that they're going to need to support the district when I leave.
So just to break it down, that this is knowledge and support specific to your Title One department in relation to?
It is all of the federal programs, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four.
Yellow students, ESOL, dyslexias.
And they actually have just started bringing in I D E A as well. Because post-COVID, we have seen. And they actually have just started bringing in IDEA as well because post-COVID, we have seen so many directors and. Top of organizations in the state education pool leaving. There are so many newbies. I was the young person just a few years ago. And now I'm probably, like in this meeting, I'm probably the senior one in a lot of our ACTAC meetings. Because there have been so many turnovers and this organization was a lifeline when I came in. I don't know if you remember Janie, I took over for Betty Lathan and she was gone six weeks before I moved into the position. So I walked into an office full of federal grants and I was like, okay, we can do this. So, you know, organizations like this that really, um, help keep the standard for our programs and what we do are just integral. Because it is such a, um, finite set of skills that you have to have.
And I would imagine that right now there's a lot of things changing regarding to roles, financing.
And there's a lot of unknown.
Digest that and make sure that, hey, let's put it in a simple language. We don't have to spend extra mon- money in terms of. Additional legal fees to, trying to understand what those changes.
Absolutely. And they have such a great collaborative network at the Florida Department of Education as well as with NAFIPA, our federal. Agency that we actually have, um, you know, attorneys that work directly with and, and. All the federal programs at the, at the federal level and their lobbyists come and they speak to us and they train us and they give us the ins and outs of. You know, here are the most egregious audit findings that we've seen across the United States in the last two years. And sometimes I look at them and I'm like. I can't even believe that could happen. Um.
Is this the only organization in Florida that does this work?
This is the only one that I know of. And of the sixty-seven districts, I think we're up to like, I think fifty-eight. Participate in, in ACTAC.
And from my research, it seems, you know, like it's, it's a support, right?
Absolutely.
Similar to, like for us as school board members, we have, uh, Florida School Board Association, which they are there to update, help us. Um, and then it's a one annual fee of the fourteen thousand.
And that's usually based on, it's usually based on the free and reduced lunch ratio of the district. So that, and it's a sliding scale, the larger the district, the more you pay per pupil, very similar to what you would see in how your Title One dollars are allocated. And this is a hundred percent paid out of the administrative fees that my office uses for, um, Title One. So it doesn't, it doesn't take away from the schools. It doesn't take away from other resources. This is the primary, one of the. Primary resources that we put into our administrative costs to make sure that we can maintain the level of competence that we have in our department.
Thank you for that additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. York.
And Board, I do apologize, um, when asked about additions and changes, I fail to request a, a change. Um, for the Atlas MOU, we do have a member of Atlas that is here. Um, and I do, um, ask that we make an adjustment to hear that item, item sixteen point zero three. Um, now in order to, um, be mindful of that partner's, um, time.
Okay. So just, uh, like a motion to, um, amend today's agenda to move sixteen point zero three, correct? Okay. And, uh.
Second.
Second from Ms., uh, motion by Mr. Vars and second by Ms. Chung. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Hearing them, we will move forward with that adjustment. Uh, we will, uh, welcome, um. Presenters for the sixteen point zero three.
Thank you. I do apologize for that.
Good afternoon again, Board Chair Superintendent Moore. We have some, uh, I think very exciting information to share with you today. Uh, we are, we have worked very hard on building a relationship with Atlas. Atlas is, uh, an organization, it's a, uh, an academy, it's a non-for-profit organization that specializes in. In working with students with, uh, disabilities who have more involved sensory, behavior and mental health challenges. And Dr. Tim King is here to share a little bit of information and how we plan to move forward with building this relationship.
Um, good afternoon Superintendent, Board members. Um, I'm excited to be with you today. My name is Dr. King. Twenty twenty-two, when we started Atlas Academy, we started out of a need. Um, I am a former, uh, behavior discipline coordinator. For Flagler Schools, former ESC director for Flagler Schools, and also former state program director for SETNET. SETNET is a project, um, that's provide, supports interventions, resources across the state of Florida for individuals who have. A mental health diagnosis or at risk of mental health or behavior diagnosis. Um, leaving, um, the state and, uh, returning to work at home, there was some travel consulting. Um, I saw, um, a pretty big need, the same one that I saw as a ESC director, which was there are certain students that. The district just becomes limited and they tap out of resources. Um, and I saw an opportunity to support young people who needed a more intensive environment. Um, and I think that I have the right heart and demeanor to do it the right way. Um, so I, I launched Atlas. Uh, right now we have fifty-seven students who are seated with us. Our capacity is eighty students. Uh, we provide ABA support through community partners. Um, we provide mental health through community partners as well. Um, our students, um, have traditional curriculums. So we use Amplify, Ufly, uh, Wilson, Rita, New York Math. Um, for our, uh, middle and high school students, we use Eduninity, but we also have face-to-face teaching in those classrooms. Uh, we monitor everything that was happening because we didn't want to just be a behavior school. We wanted to be a full compass school. Um, and so, um, speaking with Dr. Holliday, there were, there were some opportunities for us to partner together, um, to provide some supports for students. Uh, who might not be natural path towards Atlas. Um, there may be a way for the district to partner with those, uh, families and those students and for us to be able to provide that service. Um, so, um, we're here today, um, hoping that we can establish a partnership.
What is the age range of students that Atlas is able to serve?
So we serve students K through twelve.
Yeah, I've seen several instances where in our district, we can provide some similar services to students who are older. But it really is heart-wrenching when it's a kindergarten, first, second grade student who is going to be potentially combined. With those much older students. So, um, we definitely need, uh, an alternative that's better and suited and age-appropriate. Um, with your ABA community partners, are you saying that you've vetted that they're ABA certified?
Yes.
So these are people that you're outsourcing to work with you?
Yes.
And how, how again are the students, I guess, picked if you will, that you, will we come to you?
So for, for the purposes of MOU, there'll be a process that the district would initiate to say, we think this is a student not. Um, the district would like to support coming to Atlas. Uh, just Atlas in general, uh, we, we have an open seat policy. So if I have an open seat and a family shows up and, and they meet the need, um, then we accept that student in.
For our purposes, it would be that we have, uh, held several IEP meetings. We've collected the data. We have determined that a student through a variety of reasons. Uh, we are unable, we're unable to service them in a brick and mortar setting. When that happens and we find ourselves in that situation, we would like to have options.
What is the, um, student instructor ratio? So I know you have fifty-seven students now, half at eighty. And which campus? Because I see there's three different locations. So if you could just kind of explain that to me so I can see visually.
So, um, our rooms are clustered, so we have a K one, a two, three, a four, five. And then our middle and high school students are grouped together. Our classrooms are no more than ten students in a room. So right now I have eight teachers. Uh, we have three, um. Teacher assistants or parent supports. And then again, there's a team of, uh, registered behavior technicians through those agencies. Um, that service our students. Um, the ratio in the room is typically a one, uh, three to one ratio.
So three.
Three students for every one adult.
And that one adult would be, it could be a, a parent or.
A teacher or a behavior technician.
Or a behavior technician. All right. So, um, with the behavior technicians, because I know those are, like, that's really vital, but I know it's not always. It, it doesn't always happen because it, there's not a lot of them and then contracting. So how many behavior technicians do you have? Because I hear a lot of, a need for that for students, but we can't find them or we can't get contracted. So I'm just kind of curious. I just want to make sure.
I might also piggyback off that you're using the term behavior technician whereas in our county, we say a behavior interventionist. Is there a difference?
There, there is a difference, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm trying to see the.
So behavior interventionist is typically a teacher, um, who, who works at, um, the other side of the tacky behavior. Um, and registered behavior technician is someone who has done a forty-hour course in foundational behavior, how you identify. How, uh, do you, um, put interventions in place to support it through the applied behavior analysis model? And they work under the directions of a board certified behavior analysts. Um, I would have to come back to you and tell you the exact amount, but what I would tell you is that, uh, one of the challenges that. A school district will have is, is, um, working through the, the recruitment and, and finding them and then keeping them there. We, we have enough community partners, but we also schedule out every week. So every Wednesday, my team is scheduled and with the community partners, here's the students that have been in attendance. Here's who we, we know is going to be there. That, that kind of deal. We often find ourselves in a situation where, um, we are fully staffed and we might have to tell a community partner, we don't have work for the RBT today. Um, like we have too many people. Um, yeah, we, we're not having an issue of not being able to get enough people in our department to work.
And with the three locations, Holly Hill, Daytona Beach and Banel, how does, how does that work with students, um? Like, it's a physical location?
It is.
Faculty, do they have a rotating schedule or students go to one and?
So our, uh, we, we are split into two models, uh, I'm sorry, into two phases, phase one and phase two. Uh, phase one is our most need intensive students and that is our home campus where we started in Holly Hill. Um, that building is a K-five building in Daytona. Uh, we have our middle school set up, our middle high school room. Uh, we also have a daycare. So we have a daycare on the bottom floor and then we have our middle high school room on the top floor and that's all considered to be phase one. And Banel, we have phase two. Our phase two is less intensive behavior needs. Most of our phase two students. Um, just need a smaller class size and instruction and look a little bit different. Uh, so we provide that model and that was part of our, the growth that we saw with students. Where, uh, we track behavior like daily. And so we're looking, we're seeing progress and we're like, they don't need intensive behavior supports. We're having great conversations with parents and they're like, we, we don't really want to leave Atlas. Like, we like this model. So phase two was born so we can continue to serve those students without having that intensive true behavior need. Uh, so anyone who's in Daytona or Holly Hill, that would be our students who are most need intensive and that's where most of our support is.
So I see in the agreement here though, that there's a flat fee, no matter if the student needs the deeper behavior intensive. Therapies and support versus they just need a different environment. So, um. I imagine because, do you change the ratio if they need that particular support? Um, and so if you could talk to me about like the reason for the cost not being different.
So for students that Flagler may be referring, there wasn't a conversation to refer, to refer students that need the, that did not need intensive behavior support.
So you're saying your open door policy is for general public, but for us, this would pass through in our requirements. So, um.
And, and I just want to add, for, um, this, this partnership, this agreement, this would be us identifying. Um, students that are Flagler School students that we need to service in a different manner, that we're struggling to service within. Um, the offerings that we have. And so that is how those students would be connected, um, to Atlas. Um, in order for them to receive their education.
I just wanted to make sure that it, is that clear in the language in here that a parent cannot interpret this as another. Uh, private or charter school or something of that nature. I don't know if, um, um, Sven needs to wait on that.
He did, um, he has, uh, reviewed this agreement. Uh, this is strictly between a relation, the students that we are referring, referring out. If a student is going to Atlas, whatever their charge, whatever their agreement with a student that is entering by, in another means, we would not be a part of that. But this is just the students we are ref- we are referring to Atlas.
Okay. I think the last question is regarding obviously, um, you know, data security, uh, FERPA. Potentially HIPAA in some of these cases. Uh, does this agreement allow us to essentially, um, vet, uh. Atlas's systems so that we don't run into a situation where perhaps there's a data breach. In us transferring the needed information regarding students.
So this agreement is like all of our agreements to say that Atlas is responsible for ensuring they are compliant. With all state requirements. And if they were not, then there would be a, um, we would then. Come back to the table and possibly void that agreement if we were in that situation.
Transfer data between them, then we are not, we're held harmless if there's an issue. Okay.
Ju- just for the record, we, we do HIPAA and FERPA compliance training as part of our pre-service every year.
Well, uh, it's not so much that, it's. Yeah, you're using a lot of ed tech and, um, you know, even look at Power School. Power School had, they're a massive SIS system. And they had a huge data breach. You know what I mean? It can happen to billion-dollar companies. So.
How long is this MOU good for? Because I'm not seeing an ending to this.
I think it's a year. We would redo it every year.
Okay, it would just be yearly.
I have two questions if we could. So, um, one on transportation. Um, can we, can you talk a little bit about the transportation and how, is that going to be a part of the IEP or is that going to be a part of the plan? Of course, as far as transportation, and then we understand whether there's going to be an increase in travel cost or what that's going to be?
Yes, sir. Part of the MOU outlines, um, what the, what the cost could be should we decide to use transportation from Atlas. I think it's eighteen hundred dollars for if we decide to use Atlas as transportation. If we don't, it would be something that Flagler Schools would incur. And we would use our own transportation.
Then going back to the liability piece here of something that happens to the student while they're in your care, but they're actually our student at that point. So we're talking, where, where did we land in that? I mean, I know that's, that's a bunch of lawyer talk, but. Um, I'm just making sure, I'm, I'm seeing in like thirteen where you do have, I'm assuming that's the minimum liability that's a part of that. I'm assuming. Is there?
Yes. Yeah, and, and I, I can bring in insurance policy because I don't, I don't remember all the numbers, but yes, sir. We, we have liability insurance that covers, yeah.
Million dollars.
I just, because these are our students, as we're saying, right? They're just being serviced at this location. And so if something were to happen, then we're the ones that's going to be, you know, the, the parent's going to be coming to us for us and we end up being potentially sued. For what may potentially happen. So I'm, I'm trying to cover, you know, our cost here and what that may potentially happen. God forbid that were to happen.
I wonder, what is the comparison re- related to what our insurance coverage is on students? Is this similar?
We may have to get back to you.
Sorry, that was.
I would, I would like to be our apples and apples here.
Yes, we can definitely do that.
I think he had something that he wanted to add.
Yeah, I just wanted, that's a great point, but excuse me, back to, uh, Board Member Reddy's, uh, point. It's just, it's paragraph eight. That's in the, regarding the federal statutory appliance for privacy. In the nature of the work that they're, they'll be doing, then FERC allows the, the sharing of the information between the two agencies. I know we didn't talk about that directly, but.
Yeah, I think what I'm, let's say if they're using Eduninity, right? And they have to put that student information in there. Uh, student data privacy for students is, like, it's even their email address. You're not allowed to technically release out. They have to be very careful. So if Eduninity messes up and somebody hacks and takes their student, I wanted to know what's our liability in that. Because technically they're still our student.
Technically, we, we're going to be liable for every, every, uh, agency that we expose our students to. There's a, there's an additional liability, you know, similar to like if you had a product that was passing between different agencies. Every agency that touched that product is assumed some kind of liability for that issue. And so it's subjecting themselves to a potential, to a potential suit. If that product is to, to, you know, break or something like that. So, uh, it, it is, it is a, a concern. But the language of the, the MOU is designed to, to address that issue and minimize it as much as possible. But telling you that we're erasing it would be false.
Okay.
Am I just not seeing where this renews every year? Because we usually have language, like we can, whenever we end a agreement. I had, um, I just wanted to understand the transportation, uh, just a couple of more questions. So transportation, so if a student. You know, they live here in Flagler and they are needing to go to the Daytona campus and their parents are not able to bring them. And we don't have a bus available to drive them or would it be a van? I, I don't know. So then they used Atlas transportation. So it's eighteen hundred dollars for that one student for the whole year? And then if there's two students, then it's eighteen hundred dollars and eighteen hundred dollars per student. And, um, but then for us to use our, let's say we had a bus for us to use or a van. Would that exceed the time for them to be in the car anyway? So we'd have to use.
That it, we may opt to. So what I would imagine is we may take a look at what, uh, you know, there are some cases like we're already busing students. It does say that we may opt to. So what I would imagine is we may take a look at what, you know, there are some cases like we're already busing students the Volusia line, right? So I think we would probably look at it logistically to say, what's the best choice? What's the most economic? What's the best or the quickest time to get the student there? But this leaves open, well, it would be awful if we didn't have any way to get them there. And so they're saying, okay, we'll provide the transportation, but we additional costs.
That's the way I take it, is that correct?
And also what is needed for the student. You know, there may be a situation where it is best for Atlas based on the student's need to transport and for us not to. But that would be an agreement that would be made by student between the district and Atlas. I would like to just bring to your attention that there are many programs that are Volusia Flagler programs that are geared to service students that are here in Flagler County, but they may be located in Volusia. And we have struggled over the years to find sustainable solutions to get the students to those programs on a regular basis. And so having this option says to us, even if we cannot, we it's, we cannot provide that transportation, there is a means to allow for Atlas to be able to provide it, especially because Atlas will determine where that student needs to be educated. If it's in location one, two, or three. And so we may be able to get students to the location that's here. But we may say to Atlas, if that student needs to go to a different location, then that we would allow for them to provide the transportation. It just gives us that flexibility to partner with Atlas as well as a parent in this to identify what is best for for that student.
And then, so thank you. I'm just trying to get it clarified. And then with the tuition, so I see, you know, it's approximately fifteen thousand dollars. So if we have a Flagler student that, you know, this is a better place for them and they're learning, that money would be from, because if they have, you know.
The generated FTE.
Yep. So then, okay, so then it just gets transferred right there, okay?
And it's monthly. So at any time, as you look through this, at any time, if the student is making such progress that we're coming back, we can make decisions based on month. We will be paying them monthly the tuition, the one-time technology fee, and if we use transportation, all of that will be pro-rated.
And then the only thing, like my last, not question, but just with the staffing, so kind of what I was asking earlier, like I would love to see just more of like, more of the ratio, like the exact titles of who who will be with these students, you know, just because there's so many different opportunities and titles and we have contractors that come into our school, but yet there may not be enough. But you have enough of them. I just, I would like to see like who they are, you know, what, which certifications they have, you know, just to kind of get a breakdown. So if I had a child that that was a better place, I want to know like, how do I know, like who is it and at which campus?
And if I could just remind the board, these are decisions that you're giving, you're you're providing the allowance for us to have conversations about individual students. These are IEP meetings. So the the team, they can give you, here are the people that we staff, like we we staff teachers, we staff RBTs, we staff these individuals. But the individuals that will work with the student is based on the individual needs of the student. And so that team, that IEP team, you're just really giving permission for us to say, we will partner with individuals like Atlas to come to the table to problem solve with our parents and then identify. But the student needs and who will work with the student is based on the individualized IEP that that student has.
This is the first of its kind here, correct? Like so.
This is the first in in this manner. However, we do have partnerships with entities like PACE. Yes, Halifax Behavior, we do have. But I will tell you that when we look at our students' ability to get to those programs historically and and Dr. King, when he was the ESE Director, one of the things we we have struggled with is being able to provide the transportation. Because it may be one student for a few weeks. It may be one student for a few months. It may be one student for a whole year. But being able to make the adjustments for transportation to get those students to those resources, those resources, it presents a challenge for us. And we are work, we work through that to meet the students. But this line in this agreement allows for us to say, Atlas, we are unable to transport this student for whatever reason. It could be safety, it could be efficiency, whatever. Here, here, this is going to be a part of your service to those students if they have that need.
And I think Ms. Ramirez's point, I don't, we, it wouldn't do any good to say, well, who are the people right now in those roles, right? Those people are going to change all the time. I think maybe what you're wanting to see is what are the hiring practices? Like what is the vetting system look like? Is that what?
Yeah, just to make sure, because I know like now we have challenges getting like specific roles and just kind of seeing like, you know, it sounds like, it really sounds like this is something that a lot of our kids could benefit from. And it sounds so good, like too good to be true. So like I.
I wouldn't say a lot.
But I mean, I mean, it's getting, but I mean, getting there for these kids. And like, so I know Hillsborough County has a Campanetti Center. I don't know if you've heard of it. But, you know, I feel like we've lacked something like that. So this seems like, you know.
These are for individuals with very specific needs. I I, we do not foresee this being, you know, a lot, whatever a lot means. We we see this being a a very specific group of students.
But even the one that needs this, it could, this could be life-changing for them and their family. So I'm just like, this is.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because when I think about this right now, I can think of one or two students right now that could really benefit from having this. And that may change. It may be zero, it may be three. But it gives us the option to say, we want you to stay with us. We want to be able to provide your need. It is not working in this environment. Let's look at the other options that we have and the partnerships we have. Just like we would consider a Halifax Behavior, just like we would consider PACE, just like we would consider all of these other resources. In the past, we've had to send students to programs in different states, right? And so this is, we're identifying, the students have a need. Let us partner with this family in order to make sure we're we're meeting the needs that they have.
But I think my address some of the concerns, Dr. Halliday, is if you would define what is ABA certification? Because Dr. King has referenced that his staff is certified or are a behavior technician in which they're getting hours to be skilled in that area. And that's a very niche item that not all teachers have, right? They're they're, this is a specific program. So I think that the, it's just like if you earned an RN, right, degree, you have that certification. That's what ABA is to this type of model. So I think if you could speak to that, that would probably help the the board get a better understanding.
And I think Dr. O'Brien probably could really.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Really, it's it's three different levels that you can be certified by the Behavior Analysis Certification Board. Now, one is that you hear a lot, behavior technician or registered behavior technician. And that really is a high school diploma plus forty hours of competency. And one of the things that distinguishes it is you continue to be supervised by a a BCBA or a BCA BA, so an assistant behavior analyst or a board certified behavior analyst throughout the entire time you're practicing, which we don't see that in many other career types, I guess. The board certified, board certified behavior analysts, which we do have some on our staff. One, we've previously though, had more that are practicing with students. We have them here and they're in the role of behavior specialist at our district. What becomes difficult to kind of, and that is a master's plus postmaster's certification, a lot of clinical experience and passing a board exam. It becomes difficult to maintain some of those positions at a school district because it's hard for us to pay them competitively and hard for us to maintain the supervision. So we could hire a bunch of behavior technicians to help, you know, provide ABA services. But then we also have to be supervising them with a postmaster's BCBA who is able to provide that direct clinical oversight throughout the entire time that they are employed with us. So that's why you see most of them in a community provider type setting where you either contract or the parent, you know, has them through their commercial insurance.
Cause the number you need could fluctuate dramatically from semester to semester and where the students are located within the district.
And caseloads are very specific. The ethical guidelines are different from what you experience with the Department of Education. So it just, you know, that's why it's sometimes difficult for a school district to employ those positions.
I want to go back to one of your comments you made earlier about your community partners. Can you talk a little bit about who they are?
Yes, sir. So we have Lighthouse Therapy, Forest Coast Autism, All Therapy, Support, PBS. These are all community-based agencies that typically are referring students to us either just because they think we're a great place and everybody should come. Or they have a client that is really struggled and is being transitioned in some capacity out of a public school setting. So since they already have to come in and service a client, they just partner with us to make sure that that we can have all our needs met.
And we, Flagler Schools has MOUs with most of those providers as well. So we already work with them.
Yeah, I was also going to say that. So those are all agencies that are in your school's on a daily basis. It's it's just a different environment for us.
And they're not staffed from us. They're not our staff. They're being, they're providing services directly to our students via the families.
If I could, I would also address board member Fars's concern regarding liabilities in the liability coverage. So as you're aware, you know, public school district, we enjoy sovereign immunity limits. So NEFAC, the NEFAC consortium and their chosen insurance agency covers us for the entirety that we would be exposed. It's two hundred thousand dollars per and then three hundred thousand total incident. So it's well under, well under the numbers mentioned here. Now, with regard to malpractice, that's that's another question. But with regard to like injury negligence, harmful death, you know, something like that, then we're covered.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that follow-up.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we are now going to move back to nine point zero two, Student Code of Conduct. We have Mr. Finelli and Mr. Glasgow.
All right. Good evening, Chairman FERC, School Board Superintendent Moore. We are here to ask for permission to advertise the updated codes of conduct for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And I have Mr. Glasgow here with me today, who's going to walk you guys through the the revisions that we're looking to bring forward.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Superintendent Moore. To begin, we'll wait on the presentation. I just want to preface that both codes of conduct have been updated and there's a PDF version for just simplicity. I put it all into the presentation so you can get both documents separate and then the presentation itself. And then if we could open up the third document, the presentation, thank you. So to start off, I just wanted to review the the reason why we go through this annually is just to make sure that we're in compliance with current laws. Particularly that we have House Bill eleven oh five that is currently going through legislation. So I'll address that in here, but it hasn't been officially signed off by the governor. So that's not something that we'll be taking a look at currently. It enhances clarity and fairness into Superintendent Moore's point previously about just some of our processes in our code. We have the language there, just we could probably do a better job of rewording it or making it clear for our families. And then also the revisions and changes that we're looking at addresses some of the emerging issues that are currently going on on in our school, whether it's through technology or safety concerns or just administratively, how we can help support our families. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the the next slide is the approval timeline. As Mr. Finelli said, that we're here to ask for, one, we're going to review the revisions that are currently being proposed and then ask for approval at the next board meeting, which is on May twenty-seventh. If approved at that point, that'll give us our thirty-day timeline. Actually, it'll be more than a thirty-day timeline because the next board meeting would be in July. So we're going to be open for approximately fifty-eight days versus the state legislation of thirty. Going to the next slide, I wanted to update the board about our seeking input and feedback. We have met all these dates and worked with the stakeholders. In addition to that, we also increased the rollout digitally online. So we did communicate out with our families via social media, Facebook, and then through our district website as well. I'll cover it in the next slide. But last time we spoke, we had about forty-seven responses and now we're up to approximately one hundred and eighty-six responses. So definitely got a good amount of feedback, but it was good to be able to target where kind of our our information was coming from. Was it coming from our school-based leadership? Was it coming from PTO and SAC or was it coming from the general public that we're sending it out to? I'd also like to highlight that we did two rounds with our deans to review the inputs. So both elementary and secondary deans were included to review it, going through all the stakeholder input and gathering their feedback on what we can take a look at. And then also, we had the opportunity to meet with students at the Teen Summit, which was held at the beginning of, or at the end of April timeframe. And we were able to meet with students and talk about particularly the code of conduct and how it applies to them. Next slide is just discussing how we are up to one hundred and eighty-seven responses overall. We're still seeing secondary providing most of the input with elementary there, but then we have quite a few families that have children in both our elementary and secondary schools. Focus of feedback, nothing's really changed in here. It's specifically the intent and trust code, discipline, some IDs and then safety concerns. And then the rest of it, it's just that they have the option of putting in what, you know, what their concerns are overall. And that tends to, it's kind of in sentence form or whatever the topics that are most important in is what they're putting in that other category. So that's why you don't see it classified there. Please go to the next slide. Just as a quick review, we did review language regarding false reporting and defiance. And we already have codes in our student code of conduct that are there. So we won't be pursuing those additional codings at this time, but it could be something that we review for in the future. We reviewed the participation in field trips and other major school, other major school activities. We have that addressed in our current, in our current code of conduct. So what we're going to take a look at is our internal procedures of how to increase clarity and communication with both our families and our schools to make sure everyone's aware of, you know, not being able to participate in something or what could get you granted into being able to participate. The next point is reporting violations that it's covered in there. So we have to see something, say something in there. We have Fortified Florida that's also included along with the district website for reporting bullying directly. And when you look at it, it's towards the beginning of the code of conduct. It's not hidden. It's not really anywhere. So there was really not a need to update that portion. And then lastly, addressing timelines of reporting alleged violations of the student code of conduct. So that has been addressed in there in multiple different areas with with some language. Taking a look at the considerations, we did add language addressing the topic of self-defense. And we also added language to address off-campus behavior that disrupts on-campus learning and or the function of a school. And then from the next slide, clarified language about being a witness to a violation of the code of conduct versus being a witness to a potential law violation. And then also added clarity and a reasonable timeline for the appeals process. As we go through this, just some editing notes, whether it's on here or it's in the individual PDFs, anything that is just struck through, that would be a clean delete. Anything that's highlighted in red, that'll be just a general new or amendment to the current code. If it's in blue, that means that it came directly from a Niola policy update. And then finally, anything in orange, which at this time, we won't find any, but if legislation were to hit by the time that we go to finalize this, that it would be indicated in orange. But right now, we don't have anything in orange. We'll go to the next slide. And my thought is is that I'll read through it and then if the team has any questions, I mean, we can, we can go through that. And then before moving on to the next slide. So the first one up is taking a look at the investigations at the school. And no language in here has changed for this portion. It was just adding in, clarifying language as far as what does it mean to be criminal? A lot of times, student code of conduct, while it's similar to criminal, it's it's the, here's our expectations. And if you violate them, there's consequences that occur, but it's not the same as as law enforcement violating state statutes. So we wanted to be very clear of what that looks like. So in it. Um, so in it, just added clarifying language of, um, a crime is being suspected violation of state law. And then if a student is arrested and/or taken into custody due to a crime being committed on campus, law enforcement and school personnel shall utilize best efforts to immediately notify the parent or guardian. Going to the next slide and continuing, uh, for any students who witness, uh, the alleged crime, which is suspected violation of state law, a legal guardian must be notified prior to any law enforcement officer meeting with the student. And then specifically victims or a witness of alleged criminal violations of a student is a victim or witness, administrative investigators will notify parents or guardians of potential questioning by law enforcement as soon as possible. Moving on to the next slide, so this is where it differentiates between law enforcement and then what we do here within the school-based administrative violations of student code of conduct, um, just adding that clarifying language. And then the last piece of it being a victim or witness. If a student is a victim or witness of, uh, student code of conduct violation, administrator or administrative investigators are allowed to question the student without first contacting the parent. It is a courtesy though that we do, um, reach out to our families, but it's not necessarily required of us to do so prior to. Before we move on to revision two, do we have any questions or concerns?
Um, I see that the first infraction in all of these is a phone call to the parents. So is that defined district-wide as to who's responsible to do that? Or is that per school decision? Should that come from the teacher, the dean? Where's that coming from?
So as far as within our student code of conduct, we also have our discipline matrix that pairs up to it. So if, if we do have a staff member that creates a referral and it's put in, the number is generated, our deans are tasked with doing the administrative code assigned to it and then comparing that to the matrix. And whatever it, wherever it aligns and the consequence that's given, all consequences do include parent contact. So if a student does receive a referral, they have a consequence issued, it should be that dean that is reaching out to apply that. Um, it also could be an administrator or it could be the principal doing it. If it's classroom-based, then if they're doing like a four-step tracking form within the classroom, then it's encouraged that our staff or our teachers or support reach out to the parents.
So you're saying this is just to the point that gets to referral. And for clarity, most teachers are required to say, you know what? They've got to do the same offense in your classroom within one academic quarter, three to four times before it goes to a referral. So you're saying after three to four times of the same exact offense within a quarter, the consequence is a phone call home?
So what I'm saying to clarify is that we do use PBIS to support that. So the behavior tracking piece, anytime that a teacher feels that a violation of code of conduct has, has happened, they're encouraged to write a referral. If a teacher, they have that autonomy to, you know, take a look at the behaviors that are going on in their room. And they could do something prior to, uh, to help try to alleviate from a student incurring a discipline referral, um, some kind of remedial actions or, or phone calling home and, and working with the families. But if our teachers feel that we do have a violation of code of conduct, they are encouraged that they can write a referral.
So if I could, I, I think I, I understand what you're getting at. So we usually use those tracking forms in the classroom when it's a classroom management issue, when it's a violation of classroom rules and not necessarily school rules. So a student that's out of their seat without permission or a student that's calling out. Those are behaviors that could be managed through a behavior tracking form where the teacher will call the parent, say, hey, these are the classroom rules which are being violated. And then they would document it on the form and then they would work with the family to resolve those behaviors within the classroom. If it's a violation of student code of conduct, the district rules, those would then follow our referral, our discipline referral process. So, um, what you're referring to is that step-tracking form where it may be a violation of classroom rules and not necessarily something that would warrant, uh, discipline through the dean's office.
Um, I think it would behoove us to ensure that that understanding is common throughout the district. Just looking at some of these level two, level three, for example, profanity, um, there are instances where that is being, uh, pushed through on a tracking form as opposed to saying that that is a behavior item. So, um, and, you know, some of this might have kind of changed and adjusted. But that's where we get this idea and parents have these complaints that these students keep doing these same things and they're, and things aren't being done to them, right? Um, and where's that gray line between you're telling the student to sit down, uh, so you can have a, an environment conducive to learning and they're just being defiant, you know, in between, you know, it can seem small. But when it's in the environment, uh, of trying to teach and learn, i- it's, it's prohibitive, right? And so I think that's what I would like to ensure. We have some clarity and consistency, uh, amongst the schools. I mean, even related to dress code, uh, the items that I'm seeing on the dress code, which I believe haven't changed. We don't s- see that being followed and the thing is, well, we really just want them to show up to school. Are we really going to write them up and give them a suspension for violating the dress code, code for the thirtieth time, right? But yet, uh, it can be the tipping point, I think, um, or, uh, for some pa- parents to say, well, why are you enforcing it with my child and not all, all of these other children, right? Yeah.
Sure. Fairness and consistency across the district is important, especially when it comes to this.
I'm also curious where it says, uh, pornography is a level two, but profanity is level three. That doesn't, that seems kind of rare.
Well, that is definitely something that we can look at and address through this process. So we can bring that back to our deans and administrators to see if we want to adjust the level on it.
Yeah.
So we can look at that, so.
I, I think that's almost backwards.
Appropriate, raise the level of that.
To clarify, we have profanity and then we have profanity to staff. Profanity in general is a level two where profanity towards staff is a level three. Is the suggestion being that, the recommendation being that both profanity and profanity towards staff?
I was comparing, the pornography is a level two. I don't have, i- I was saying, well, if profanity to staff, but yeah, on campus using a school device, I'm assuming, because they're not allowed to have cell phones, that seems out of whack a little bit.
For the most part, our filters limit students' ability to access any type of, of content such as that.
Okay.
So a lot of times it is on a, on a personal device, if it's bound on a cellphone or something, but still.
And is that a different, um, let's say if somehow they're able to bypass, is that different? Like, for example, they could take photos of themselves at home and put it in a Google Doc and it's not, it's not going to be filtered.
Yeah, so Superintendent Moore is a hundred percent right. We have our different levels of technology misuse. Um, so we have technology misuse level one, two, and three, depending on what it is and if they've shared it. And that does, in that particular policy, that does cover pornography as well. And if it's shared and at what level. But we can look at that because if we need to adjust or clarify, um, that level two pornography, we can, we can address that, adjust that.
I think another item that I would like clarity on is my understanding that there's also a Florida statute that if a teacher feels that a student's being disrupted in the learning environment, they have the ability to remove that student. Um, what is the policy process in order to inform the parent if that happens? What are those cases, uh, for documentation? Because it sounds like that is ha- in those cases, the teacher is making a judgment to keep the learning environment safe, free of distraction and circumventing, uh, in some cases, the drawn-out process to do this. Four or five tracking times, one, two, three, four referrals.
The statute, um, describes the process that must be taken when a, when a teacher requests that a student be removed from their class, including, um, that be going before a committee. Um, at that committee, um, there will be someone of the, um, uh, who have been, who's been identified by that teacher to represent the teacher in the position in that. So the statute lays out exactly what has to happen in that process. And we can, if a teacher makes sa- such request, we must follow that process in order to make a determination. Now statute, um, does not, it's not that they must be removed, but that you must bring forward that committee in order to make that, um, that determination. I will tell you based on, um, m- my knowledge is that, that, uh, it is typically, um, approved unless it is a student who's been requested and the, um, only location for that student to be educated is in, in that spot. And so then we would have to put some additional supports in to make sure that the teacher is, is supported. But that is not something that happens very often, that it is no.
So, uh, I, and I, if, uh, the, maybe, um, our, uh, our counsel can educate me on this. I thought, I, I thought there were two different statutes relating to that. One is the teacher's right to say, um, uh, in a committee format, here's the reasons why I feel this child should be reassigned. And the other is I see an immediate danger or situation in which today, right now, I'm not waiting for committee. It's not going for a formal process, but I have the right to remove the child from a room. So that's, I think, the one I'm talking about here. I'm not seeing like, uh, if that were to happen, what's the requirement of the teacher documented to communicate to the parent, these kinds of things?
So if there wasn't, uh, an, an, um, incident that occurred and the teacher said, you know, this student needs to be removed, that student will be removed for the rest of that day and until the committee has made a decision. And it would be the responsibility of the administrator in order to contact the parent, to inform the parent of this process.
Okay, so that's if the teacher goes through the administrator. Otherwise, they don't have the ability to act on their own to do this.
Well, a teacher can always call for support from the administrator if there's an immediate need that has happened. But if it is a request for the student to be removed from that classroom, um, out of that classroom, will that will, for, so that that teacher is no longer the teacher of record for that student, then that's the process. But if there is an issue happening right now, every single one of our teachers, um, have their, uh, sentegegs badge where they can call for support to their classroom. And in that moment, that administrator responds and provides support as appropriate and necessary. Also to the point of the referral, um, there is also language that says that we, as the district, cannot manipulate the language that the referral, that the teacher has written on the referral. And so the teacher writes the referral and the dean receives the referral. The referral is, uh, processed as appropriate and the consequence is identified, uh, by, by that dean. And the language says that we must follow up with that teacher. If the teacher has questions about the discipline that was provided to that student, why that was, um, selected. That it ma- it's a little bit, um, different for us because we do have a matrix and most of, um, and not every county has a matrix. And so our matrix is very clear around the consequences, um, that students receive for different, um, behaviors.
So there's two different sections, I'm assuming, because, uh, one oh three point three two is the authority for the teacher to remove from the conduct. So it, there must be another one that I'm just not seeing related to what you're talking about. Because I think there's two different, two different things that are happening here.
One is a refusal. One is a refusal for, a teacher has the right to refuse a student to return to their classroom.
Right, but that's, that, but that's usually more drawn-out process.
Like you're not in my class.
And the other one is an immediate removal due to safety or disciplinary concerns.
Correct. Like, uh, you know, you see this a lot where it might be, hey, uh, you're, you might sit in the adjoining office or you might say go to the in-school detention room or something, um, depending. And so I don't see that language in here and I could see if that is statute where a teacher has the right to do that, but we don't have that in our code of conduct as a potential, and the language around that to inform parents. Because parents are going to go to this, right? They're not going to go to search Florida statutes.
It's in board policy.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's coming up in Neola.
That's all about it, it's in board policy.
You want to come to the table?
But I think it should be, you know what I'm trying about? Like, if you're going to say, hey, this is our student code of conduct, then we need to pull out everything in one spot, right? Even though there may be reference in all these others, parents are going to go to this document for it. They're not going to go search both items, right?
Agreed. And we do have nine revisions and I do some, I do believe some of the other revisions directly address what, what you're asking. Specifically with Neola policy, I think it's fifty-six ten, uh, specifically. Um, and it is outlined in here and highlighted in blue. And then wi- within it, we do address it in brief, but then we do say, for more information, go reference the policy. So once we get everything, once the board signs off on the Neola updates, we'll, it'll have to be reflected in code. But from what we have right now, it's, yeah, it's already addressed.
Because with Neola, that's the whole purpose that we're doing this because of putting, right, the statute so, right? So I'm understanding as a parent, you were using Neola because of, you know, to keep up with that, so it should all be.
And with the, also the understanding that we try to, um, reference as much as we can. However, sometimes we have to put a blanket reference to say, in accordance with board policies or in accordance with state statute because those things are changing. And we are, aren't able to get into this one document, all of the pieces that families will need to reference because they're, they are different. Do you have board policy and we do reference board policy, we reference statute? Um, but those things are ch- are also changing as well.
Well, you know, one thing that could be helpful is, you know, mo- most of, of those who access this probably access it online. So if those could be hyperlinks to the policy, so, or to the statute, so if it references it. Because it, for them to go an extra step, if it's just their click it, it takes them to board docs, right? Because there's a linkable link, uh, it just makes it that much easier. And, you know, it allows us to, to hold them accountable that, hey, we've tried to make it as easy as possible for you to see what the policy is.
And we do have a lot of live links, but that is good. And if we have new ones that we're adding to it, we'll make sure that those go live as well.
Yeah, and, you know, whether we, is it a PDF document that, that, or is it HTML, um, on the website? Like, is it actually like a webpage?
Ours is, ours is currently a PDF.
Okay.
There are links within that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the concern is, is that, so we do printed versions as well for families requested.
Right.
So if they're only referencing the printed version, they wouldn't be able to different, we don't get them printed in color. So there is no differentiation between this is a link unless we specifically stated or if we say, you know, for maybe a blurb and they're about, you know, referencing hyperlinks within.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I mean, for sure. I mean, but they, if they're getting the printed one, there's no expectation for that. But the, but, you know, usually you, you just have the statue and then you'd have just a little blue, like, view at the end and it would carry forward and, you know, like, something like that.
Could I also have the actual responses to the survey, the feedback from the community members? That if it, I would like to take a look.
Oh, just to try and be, you know, head of the game, you're using new technology. Um, we could, for the printed version, add QR codes that they could just use their phone to scan, you know, and, and, and just click. That, that is just a commonly accepted thing now and everybody knows it. They all have the technology on their phone. And that might be a quick way to, to link for, for non-digital, uh, anything that we have digital that has, uh, linkable references, so.
And then. And we will share the comments to the entire board that was received.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then there was an inquiry from board member Barr's again about regarding statutes. So we were talking about the responsibilities of the teacher and then accompanying statute that speaks to the responsibility of the principal. Um, I think that's Florida statute one thousand one five four, point five four. And tho- those two statutes, the one that you referenced before and that one, they work in conjunction together to provide due process in those situations to the student.
Can I just ask for this one that's on the screen? So if you are that child that, you know, that you're in trouble, you, maybe you did something or didn't do anything, you know? And the teacher or whoever is asking and they don't want to say anything because they don't have their parent, what happens to that child? So, because I, I mean, I see what it says, but just curiosity, because you hear that a lot, so I'm just, like, what is the process?
So if it's a violation of student code of conduct, um, we do provide due process. We do ask that our students give their side and, and version of it. Um, we do take into context as deans the information that's being provided. And then if the student provides any information that, that may be questioning, then it would be the, the dean's responsibility to look that up. So a lot of times the students will say, well, go review the video. And we go back and review the video. Or they say, talk to my friend A, B, and C. And we go collect statements from A, B, and C. More times than not, that information that the student is given, it, you know, it, it doesn't support what, what the student is hoping for. But we would still track down any students that may have been witnesses to it or any information that may help out a student. It's not necessarily going to do away with the violation or not have a consequence. But it, it does help support their due process and it does help them differentiate maybe the, the totality of circumstances that are going on. Maybe it wasn't as severe as what was reported, maybe it was something else.
But if they won't speak to you because they say, oh, I'm not talking to you because my parent, but even though it says that, you know, you're allowed.
We will still contact, we will contact the family.
Okay.
And oftentimes, these are, students are writing their statement out. This is what happened.
Yeah, I just, just thinking of what you're.
Even in that example, if they. But in the, in, even in that example, if they, they won't.
But we will call their parent saying, you know.
Of course, we're gonna call their parent, have them, if they write a statement and then once they get home, they have identified some parts that they've missed and the parent wants, they can provide that. We're still going to take the information that's provided and investigate to the best of our ability to see what has occurred and then provide consequences, um, based on that.
And they, they do, they have the right not to speak. If they say, I don't wanna talk about it or I'm not gonna write a statement, they can do so. But we let them know, we're going to make decisions based off of the information that we're provided. And we share that with the parent as well. Like, we have to make decisions off the information we've provided. Your student has chosen not to, to.
I guess that's where I'm getting at. So if they, so it's important for parents to review this and.
And we do have parents who, um, email and say, you know, my, when my kid wrote the statement, they made, they left off some, uh, key, um, pieces of it. No problem, provide that information and it's going to be utilized in order to identify who, what, from your lens, what happened? Who was there? And then that information is going to be used by the deans or the administrator in order to do an investigation, um, of the situation.
Maybe a silly question, but, uh, when it says administrative investigator, I'm really more looking at the criminal side here, but it's in the school setting. Are you just talking about the dean or are you talking about someone at the school? I'm assuming that you're assigned to be the administrative investigator.
By, by, uh, job description and focus, it would either be our deans or an administrator, so an assistant principal or a principal.
Okay, just making sure that that's the right.
The right person. Any other concerns with revision one before moving on to two?
Well, we made it through one.
All right, let's move on.
So, so moving forward to revision two, student discipline overview. Um, the line is crossed out where it says, certain law violations or activities off-campus may have consequences at school. Uh, that was expanded upon in the current, or the proposed language is, certain law violations or activities that occur off-campus may result in school-based disciplinary consequences if they create a substantial disruption to the school environment or generate a reasonable fear, intimidation, or safety concern among students or staff. This includes, but is not limited to, communications via social media, off-campus altercations, or incidents that occur outside of school hours. When the impact carries over into the school setting, school administration will consider the totality of the circumstances, including intent, escalation, and whether the behavior affects the safety or operation of the school. Any questions or concerns regarding two?
No, that's basically it, right? I threatened you at home and now you're gonna bring it to the school. And it doesn't mean that we can't act if it's only in the school setting that's affecting the student, yeah, yeah.
Either that or the education of others. And working with Mr. Smith, that was, there, there's current case law that has went through. And if we can show how it has truly affected either the operations of a school and or the, the learning of others, then, then we can.
I'll bet.
Moving on to revision three, addition of discipline decision timelines. So this one here is in blue as it references school board policy fifty-six-ten. Following a reported behavioral incident, school administrators will conduct a prompt and thorough investigation. In most cases, disciplinary concerns will be investigated within three school days and the outcome will be communicated to the students and the parents at the conclusion of the investigation. If extenuating circumstances prevent a final decision within this timeframe, school administration will provide an update to the parent or guardian explaining the delay in anticipated resolution and writing. This practice supports the district's commitment to transparency and upholding students' due process rights as outlined in school board policy fifty-six-ten and state statute one thousand six point zero-nine. Um, to add to that, uh, that doesn't supersede a going investigation. It's outlined that there's specific ten days in that. And that's why I believe the word is May in here. So i- it's just a piece of, our, our schools are gonna be encouraged to, not that they don't already, but at least it's captured within our code of conduct that we'll be in contact, letting them know that, one, the, the investigation will happen in a timely manner. And if it is to go longer than anticipated, that it will be communicated appropriately. Any questions regarding revision three? Moving to four, addition of limitations of the code of conduct violations reporting. So this will be a new section, um, that's added code of conduct violations reporting. Reports of code of conduct, student code of conduct violations should be submitted within a reasonable time of the alleged incident. Allegations submitted beyond this window will generally not be investigated unless there's a direct or ongoing threat to school safety or a required legal or cesser reporting obligation. Prompt reporting is essential to support the student's safety, essential procedural fairness, and preserve the reliability of witness statements and evidence. This provision does not override legally mandated reporting requirements under state or federal law, including cesser Title IX or protections afforded to students with disabilities.
I imagine also, anything that was, uh, related to a, um, I don't know the terminology, but let's say that, uh, not school discipline, but like, uh, an actual misdemeanor or battery or rape or something, that is not gonna be within this because it would be a police matter, right?
Right, that would be, th- this is specifically speaking to school consequence and codes.
Okay.
That would be, they would be required, as in, what you're talking about, they'd have to report to the school at that point, that they got in trouble with those charges.
And we have our processes that support that.
Law enforcement had to report to the school that that person had arrested on those charges.
Okay.
And we, we do have administrative hearing procedures that, that capture when off-campus behavior occurs. Moving to revision five, appeal process clarification and modification. Um, full transparency, this was, i- it's a long section of it. So it, to, to be clear, the whole section was struck through and it was just reworded, so we'll go through it. And really, the only changes to it, um, other than making it kind of word better and flow better, is, um, some timeline adjustments that are within that. Appeals procedure for discipline concerns. Concerns related to student discipline should be resolved at the lowest level possible to promote timely and effective communication. Parents and guardians are encouraged to first address this, the concern with the staff member directly involved. If the concern is not resolved, it may be escalated to the appropriate school administrator and, if needed, to the district level. The original disciplinary action will remain in effect while the appeal is under review. If the disciplinary action was issued by a dean or assistant principal, the parent or guardian may submit a written appeal to the school principal or designee within three school days of the incident. The principal or designee will investigate the concern and provide a written response within the three school days. If the disciplinary action was issued by the principal or if the parent or guardian is not satisfied with the principal's response, a written appeal may be submitted directly to the superintendent's designee, which is my position, the coordinator of behavior and conduct management. The superintendent's designee will review the matter and issue a final written, uh, decision within three school days of receiving the appeal. Appeals reviewed by the superintendent's designee are expected to be resolved within the three days. If more than three days are needed to reach a resolution, the superintendent's designee will communicate the reason for the delay and provide the parent or guardian with a clear timeline for final resolution, not to exceed five days. Families are encouraged to be s- specific in their appeal requests, including the reason for the appeal, any relevant facts, and the outcome they are seeking. The appeal process at the school level is, is the appropriate time for any additional information or evidence relevant to the matter to be provided to the school for consideration. Appeals should focus on the current incident and disciplinary decisions under review. The decision of the superintendent's designee is final for school-level discipline matters and is not subject for further appeal within the district. In cases where the multidisciplinary team recommends disciplinary reassignment to alternative setting or expulsion and the superintendent forwards a recommendation to the school board, the student and parent guardian will receive formal written note, notice of the proposed action. This notice will outline the charges supporting evidence and the right to request a hearing from, or before the school board. The board will conduct a hearing and issue a final, uh, a written final order. And this is, um, outlined way better in fifty-six-ten, um, within that, as far as the procedurals for, um, whether it's expulsion or, or extended placement for a student. But any matters that, um, fall within the student code of conduct, it would be my position, it would be the final determination of it. Any questions regarding revision five? I know it was lengthy, we can go back if you guys need to.
And when these appeals happen, if there is going to be, um, something that's gonna be overturned or whatever, uh, Mr. Glasgow, uh, keeps me abreast of it so that when he is making a, a decision around the pe- appeal, it is one that has, has my support.
So this is, I like this, how you have it broken down. So my question is, currently, you know, I, oh, anytime there's an issue, I always include you because, you know, with your role. So basically, we don't necessarily need to go directly to you of connecting you in based on the action.
I'm definitely a resource. I would, I would prefer that. And then I'll work with the school and the family and, and communicate where we're at in the process. Um, if, if we've kind of jumped, you know, steps in it, then, then I'll be the one to communicate that out with the family, point them towards the code of conduct and then, you know, put the, the issue back to the school at whichever level, whether it be to appeal to a dean or assistant principal or to the principal forthcoming.
I just think that's one of the things we have to be extremely careful about, jumping the steps like that because we wanna make sure that when he's reviewing it, that is an independent at that point where he's not being, okay, well, I heard from this side first and so, and so this side next. I'd just like for it to be more independent to where I make sure it follows that chain to ensure that when you look at it, then you're looking at both sides objectively.
Yes, sir.
And, and even when they come to me, um, I will do the same thing. I will, um, loop in Mr. Glasgow as well as that, the school so that we can push it back through, um, the appropriate, um, chain that it needs to go through for that appeals process.
Moving to revision six, uh, this one, same way, within the fact that, so our multidisciplinary team, it's really our district discipline reviewed by a multidisciplinary team. And within that, our, our current student co- code of conduct kind of serves as the, uh, standard operating procedures for MDT. And, um, we are currently working through an SOP, uh, specifically for MDT. So we're able to remove all the language of all the parts and pieces to MDT and just really make a, a description of what families can expect if their student is referred to a district discipline review. And then all the procedures and, and the who's and the how's that will be encased within the internal SOP. In accordance with school board policy fifty-six-ten, students exhibiting persistent, severe, or violent behavioral concerns, including significant disciplinary infractions or legal charges, may be referred to the district multidisciplinary team, also known as MDT, for a district-level discipline review when school-based interventions have been exhausted or a major placing event has occurred. The MDT reviews the student's behavior history, supports provided, and current educational needs to determine appropriate next steps. For general education students, this MDT may recommend extended, uh, suspension, disciplinary reassignment to an alternative program, or structured reentry plans to include or expulsion. For students with disabilities, decisions will be made in accordance with IDEA and Section five oh four requirements, ensuring appropriate supports, manifestation determinations, and continued access to services. The team should take into consideration breaks in grading periods to aid in transitioning of students. All students placed for forty-five days or more must be reviewed by the MDT at least every forty-five days. Any recommendations requiring the school board approval, such as expulsion, must be reviewed and documented through the MDT process. So with that, any student that is being recommended by a principal for expulsion, it would be brought before MDT. The MDT team will take in consideration the school's recommendation. And then from there, that recommendation would be put forth to Superintendent Moore. If the multidisciplinary team recommends a disciplinary placement or expulsion that requires school board action, families will receive written notice outlining their due process rights, including the right to request a hearing, uh, before the school board. The school board has, uh, or will issue the final order in judicial review may be pursued under Florida statute, uh, one twenty dot six eight. Any questions regarding revision six?
Okay.
Moving forward, revision seven. General was struck through, um, it was that one sentence with the note and we've expanded on it. The current, um, the proposal is, all behaviors listed in the code are not allowed. When a student's behavior disrupts instruction, the student may be temporarily removed from the classroom and parents will be contacted. If concerning behavior continues over time, a teacher may request additional support. Any school-based committee may review the situation to determine appropriate next steps. In cases of ongoing or serious misconduct, expulsion may be considered. This is the most serious disciplinary action and requires documentation of the incident, prior interventions, and efforts to support the student. All expulsion recommendations are reviewed by district staff and must be approved by the school board. Parents and students are given the opportunity to participate in the process and may request a hearing. This guidance does not override mandatory consequences for zero-tolerance offenses or incidents involving law enforcement action or investigation that occurs off-campus may, but may impact the school environment. See board policy fifty-six-ten for more information about classroom removal, expulsion procedures, and due process rights. And I know that this was touched on briefly earlier. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding?
I'm just glad to see it spelled out, um, because I know that's a huge concern for teachers and, you know, just interference in teaching.
Yeah, so that was, that was the, the, under general, that was just the, what was in the policy? That, those two lines, yeah, so this is a great clarification of that.
And, and to add to it, just Neola in general, most, most of our school board policies were very generalized. And Neola does a very good job of, of kind of outlining the expectations and almost being the SOP for a lot of the things that we, that we do, so.
Well, seeing things like this, it shows the, the value of this effort that we're doing here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we're working hard to make sure we marry the two, the Neola policies with the code so that they fit nicely together.
Final revision number eight, addition of self-defense. Just added language that says, following the use of physical force, including actions taken in response to perceived threats, may still be considered a violation of the code of conduct. School administrators will consider the totality of circumstances, including whether the student had a reasonable opportunity to seek help, de-escalate, or avoid the conflict, or avoid conflict.
With this one, I could see where, like, if somebody goes to strike another person and they go like this, this is technically self-defense as well and is a force to keep, you know, that strike. Uh, it, can we maybe solidify the language to mean retali-? I think what you're saying is, well, you punched me, now I'm gonna punch you, right? So it's almost like a retaliatory, uh.
I think that final line.
Just go altercation.
I think it's that final line of looking at, if you go to punch me and I punch you back, the, looking to see if I had an opportunity to seek help. Well, in that moment, I may not have. May- maybe there were some things that happened before that we said we were gonna fight and all of that. That's gonna say, well, that really wasn't self-defense. You, you knew this was coming, you participated, um, in it. Um, so did they have an opportunity, did they have an opportunity to de- to, uh, de-escalate? Well, if you punched me and I didn't know that this fight was happening, I don't have that opportunity to do that or to avoid the conflict. So the, the individual looking.
Like, let's say somebody goes to kick you and you just grab their foot. You're not trying to kick them back, but you're just trying to prevent injury. I feel like this could be taken, that that is also going to be, um, uh, receive con- consequences as if you provided a direct hi- hit or a kick. And I don't, I would feel that a person has the right to avoid being hit or kicked.
Absolutely, and we can look at that, because I read this and I do not read that. I read from the lens of, if, you know, we're looking to see if you had these opportunities. If you didn't, if you grabbed the foot or you grabbed the foot and, you know, yanked them to the ground, I didn't have an opportunity to seek help, de-escalate, or avoid the conflict. I had to defend myself or protect myself in that moment. So we can look at this language to make sure it is very clear, um, as to, to the conversation that we're having right now, um, is ready.
Yeah, and one thing, I, I, two, if I look at it in two perspectives, you have two scenarios here. One, students walking down the hall, somebody just comes out of nowhere and, and then punches them and, you know, they don't know if another punch is coming and they, they hit back to defend themselves, right? Or if two kids show up at a time certain to have a fight, they both had an option to de-escalate or they. So I, I think of those two examples. Um, but what, what I, I would like to see is, um, because it still can be objective based on, on person, the persons looking at it. So I, I think there needs to be some, um, uh, maybe some sort of a, a, uh, multi- So I, I think there needs to be some, um, uh, maybe some sort of a, a, uh, multi-tier review of, of that. In the sense where it's just not a one person decides, when it comes down to this particular thing, the self-defense, I, I, there's, there's so many different scenarios to why, how, how, why somebody responded that way, you know?
It could also just be the title of that, so self-defense, you could say physical retaliation, right? Then that makes it distinct to me from self-defense.
Right, because I see the difference, like, so if you hit back and then, um, and then that person was on the ground, and then you go, continue to go at it, that's, you know, that, that's escalating, not de-escalating, you know? So ju- just kind of having some framework for, for the deans or whoever's gonna evaluate this here to come to the, what, what, because otherwise, you know, parents are gonna say, even parents themselves will have different views of what self-defense is, right?
Yes.
So if what we're hearing is you want us to look at this language and add, um, maybe some layers in there that one person is not just making the determination that it is or is not self-defense.
Yeah, and I, I think if a parent hears from three different, if it, let's just say it's three, uh, views of that, um, and it was reviewed by three different, you know, people in charge of this. Um, the parent has three perspectives, right? And it just, I, I, I...
We can definitely bring some...
Yeah, okay, so I think you get where we're going with this.
And this is the purpose of this advertisement, right? To get additional feedback, allow for, um, us to make these, um, adjustments, so we will definitely bring this back.
And that's the purpose of us putting it in there, is we want to have a clear understanding of what self-defense is. We often say, you know, it's going, when you're on defense, it's self-defense, as soon as you go to offense, it's no longer self-defense. Now, now you've become the aggressor.
Correct.
But it's hard to, to clearly define that, and, and for our deans to know where that line is and how to support it. So that's what we're trying to do with this language, and I think it will take a collaborative effort to, to get a good...
It's kind of tough, because we don't want to encourage, you know, retaliation, but they also shouldn't sit there and take a beating, you know?
Yes.
They can do something.
That concludes our revisions, um, taking a look at, uh, just updates in general. So we are currently watching, uh, House Bill eleven oh five, um, and if it's signed off on, then the next time that I come before you, we'll, we'll notate that into the code. Um, and then also, we are currently working and finalizing, you know, the process, and as that finalizes, we'll probably have additional language and or tweaks attached to the code as it becomes live.
Just so everybody who's watching and listening, that eleven oh five is the, the cell phone ban for K, which is, which is basically sitting right now with the gun.
Okay, so that, that did pass legislation, so, so that would ban the use of cell phones in, um, K through eight?
K through eight.
Okay, just...
Anytime during the school day.
Not having them on person either?
You could have them on.
Well, you can have them on person, but it's gotta be off in the light.
Okay, it's gotta be off, okay, gotcha.
The whole, like, bell to bell.
Yep.
Right.
And since we're talking about that, I would love to also encourage faculty, staff to do the same. Um, if, you know, you know, like car rider line, no phones, cafeteria, no phones.
Many of them use them as a source of communication, because we don't, we can't, we don't give them walkie-talkies to every staff member.
Well, it, it just, there was, I saw some of the, the comments about this legislation from parents, and one of their biggest concerns, they, they wanted to be able to contact their student in case of emergency. But if they, they won't be able to directly contact them, but it, but they, I mean, at that point, the kids still have their phones.
Through the office.
Yeah, they go to the office, but they still have their phones on the, in their backpacks and, and things like that, okay.
And I will say for, for us, um, here, you know, maybe middle school, you know, students definitely have their phones, but elementary, our elementary schools are not seeing an issue with this currently on campus.
Yeah, we, we got it all in a way in elementary.
Yeah, I mean, they're in lines, you know, so...
Yeah.
All right, so biggest change would just be in middle school, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on, and that leads us to nine point zero three, University of Florida, uh, MOU. And we have Dr. O'Brien back to the table, and Dr. Holliday. Welcome.
Good afternoon again, um, before you is a memorandum of understanding for the University of Florida to assist us with our evaluation and child find obligations for students with disabilities and or those that are possibly going to be identified. Couple of points for you to consider, it was, uh, it is free of charge, that they're going to provide us with the personnel, they're gonna ensure that they're all Level Two cleared, and it's, it really will provide us with some assistance.
Wow, free of charge?
Well, that's...
First time for them.
I know, I know.
It's really free.
Is it really free?
Free, free. They're getting grants to do this, so are they getting the money to do this?
They're just, Fiddler's Need Back, uh, excuse me, University of Florida, you'll see in the very first paragraph, they are teamed up with, um, the University of Florida Fiddler's Center and, um, the CARD, Center for Autism and Related Disabilities, and that is how it's happening. So they are supported from the Florida Department of Education.
Okay, any other questions on this MOU?
And just the, so yearly, I'm assuming on this one, kind of...
This one is yearly, it's Ju- it's June one through, uh, through thirty of the following day.
Probably they have to make sure they hit the funding.
Has, um, I'm just assuming, and I don't want to assume anything, but, um, I'm assuming our legal has taken a look at this?
Yes, sir.
And no, he's going, but, no, he's in, no, uh, no concerns from his side, from where we stand from a liability standpoint or anything like that, that we know of?
Are you referring to Mr. Delaney? Oh, I'm sorry.
Who's that?
That's, um, Delaney's office.
Is that...
So I don't know, they were speaking, they were, um...
Have they reviewed that?
Were they reviewing it, or was it interned?
So, um, Spanish has, and it will go before Mr. Delaney before it comes to you for review. So now that it's, um, Mr. Smith, Attorney Smith has reviewed it, now all of those things go before Mr. Delaney for, um, his review as well, prior to your acceptance.
With that being said, then, if we make sure that we can get some kind of response back from Delaney's office saying yes or no before our meeting in two weeks.
And he does that for anything that you sign and approve, he is reviewing all of those agreements prior to. And so if there was, if there is an issue, he would get with, uh, myself or with, um, Attorney Smith to make it, make the adjustment prior to you, um, approving it on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, fair enough.
Yes.
So these folks are gonna come on our campus to help support? Would they be, they're going to be employed through UF Fiddlers?
Yes, ma'am.
So they would be doing the, um, background checks, all of that, they would not be under our, um, expenditures or even Florida retirement system contributions?
Correct.
Okay, and now do they also have, uh, you know, let's say their particular employee is injured on our property, is that covered under our insurance then? Or do they have to have a separate, uh, you know, insurance for the cover of their folks? Is that part of it?
They presented theirs for workers' comp and also liability. Um, I think it's exhibit C.
Yeah.
So the, so towards the end, they have their...
I just can't remember the dollar amount, just as we talked about.
They're, well, because they're a state, they're, they're...
Okay, so it's the same as ours.
They're a state agency, so they're like the same thing.
Okay.
And these folks too, when they're coming on our campus, they will go, even though they have Level Two background screening, we still have a process of running them through HR so that, um, they, we, we do a check for that, uh, for those clearances as well.
Okay.
They become like the vent, a vendor specifically, so they have their own, okay.
So, uh, with the, you know, it says, uh, not limited to, you know, to determine exceptional student education. Uh, we previously had discussed doing some universal screeners po- potentially for gifted and or dyslexia, would they be qualified to do all of those?
They would, but the targeted audience that we're looking for, for this, is our children, our, our youngest children, our pre-K students that, that we need to do a more comprehensive evaluation for.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Are these contractors out to UF, or they actually work for UF?
It's a collaboration between the, the discretionary project in University of Florida and CARD.
They're likely contracted.
Yeah, I'm sure they're probably...
Yeah, they, they likely work for Fiddlers, yeah, no, you left.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. So we'll move on to nine point zero four, uh, career pathways articulation agreement, Mr. Reeves, welcome.
I got it. Good afternoon, boards, we have more, we have a few items for you this afternoon. Uh, first is our articulation here for career pathways, this is an agreement between us and Daytona State College, been at for a number of years. Uh, and it's a renewal annually, we currently offer eleven articulation, uh, credit earning pathways as outlined in the agreement. Programs like Allied Health, Principals of Teaching, Carpentry, and Cybersecurity, just name a few of the items. This allows students that once they complete through our programs and earn certifications and take courses for completion, that can translate into credits for them as they enter into Daytona State College.
But we can also offer some of these same options for them, even though they can still be on that career path, we still have some of those, have that ability to be able to do some of these trainings, if you will, or courses.
We have, yes, we have the opportunity for course completion to give them a, a robust and full experience in these dis- disability areas of opportunity.
As well as through, um, FTC as well.
That's where, that's where I was going.
Yes, I know.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of my question, I, I do see some, many of these, there overlaps where there are courses, like, we see the Carpentry pro- program here, and the difference is obviously here, they would be getting an industry certification, or there are several programs here that FTC would offer. I'm wondering if there, um, you know, if there's some discussion to have to say, maybe we shouldn't be competing with other folks for our students and maybe look to them for different, uh, uh, cert pathways that we cannot provide or cannot provide through FTC or else, you know, um, if we don't get enough students signing up for that, we can't get the coverage to teach those courses, right?
Great, great, and Ms. Moore and I meet annually with Daytona State College on the career pathways. Uh, our next meeting is coming up in June, and we review each of the program offerings to make sure that they're not overlapping.
Um, so like the...
And it's really about, um, options, not to take away from anything that FTC is providing, because we want our students to be a part of that as well. But, um, to give them options if the timeline does not, um, work for them, or those students, you know, prefer to go into, um, Daytona State. We don't want to limit those opportunities for, for our students.
Okay.
Creates pathways of opportunity, flexibility.
The other item was, and I think we brought this up before, regarding the ability to earn some of your teaching, um, uh, courses while you're a student here, right? Um, and then saying, well, maybe there could be an agreement where they work a year in Flattler County, uh, you know, kind of a pay it, pay it back type of thing. Have we explored any of those options? Is there law that, that prohibits us from kind of doing that type of, an agreement?
So we have a, a couple of things going, and then I'll defer to HR on, on some of that as well. We have Daytona State College this opportunity here for program of teaching. We also have, if you remember, Articulation at University of North Florida, which allows a pathway for them to take four courses while they're at, uh, the high schools to help accelerate their opportunities, which referred to, it builds into another, I think that, um, Daytona State is entering into with...
Well, that, well, the, the one we have is turned with paraprofessionals. As far as the, at the high school level, they would have to be, you, all of that would have to be dual enrollment. And there is a limitation that, uh, currently Daytona State allows as far as the number of dual enrollment courses they'll allow high schools to have. Um, so we couldn't run a full slate like an academy, we'd love to, but Daytona State holds their courses for their campuses.
State colleges are, they're limited number of opportunities on, on the campuses, so we are allowed, in a sense, we have one...
Starting to have seats.
So, seats and courses, so we can't offer, essentially...
A four AA degree on our campus.
Correct, so like, like student success, we're limited to three sections of that at twenty-five each, right? And then we're allowed to stand up, um, college algebra, college trig, and, and success. And then with that, if we wanted to shift that maybe to English eleven oh one, eleven oh two, what are we gonna take off the plate and offer those courses? So, uh, it's very limited, this is kind of gives some flexibility in that space for students and families as they're looking to, after high school and beyond to post-secondary, what their options and opportunities are.
But kind of going back to what you were saying, just a little bit, a little bit ago, Ms. Ruddy, was like, so for carpentry, for example, we have a nice carpentry building here, we just went through it just a few minutes ago. And so carpentry is listed as a career pathway for them as a student, student could do. So what we would do, I would hope, is try to funnel them to that particular program that we have here, before we would say, you know, go, to go there, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And then when they leave here, they would earn up to four hundred and fifty hours of time, because there, there's clock, there's seat time, and then there's credits. So four hundred and fifty hours would they be awarded, had they take the completion of courses and take the certification to them.
Okay, and are we doing any type of, you know, voice of the, the student, voice of the customer here, that these are the career pathway programs they're wanting to see? Like, I do see cybersecurity, that seems relatively new, but are these the items that our students want to see, uh, and want to get certifications in as they exit?
So, so a couple of things, one, we work with our students, and Ms. Moore stood up a acceleration committee where we've met a few times this year to talk with our high schools. That's where that voice comes into play, and then as we're standing up programs on our campuses, like, we just added Allied Health here, and we're working on teaching here, and what we're standing up at FTC as well. That's where the student voice comes into those pieces. Where we've come alongside, when we, uh, Dr. Moore, when Ms. Moore and I meet with Daytona State College, we talk about what they're offering, what do we have, and, and what's a good fit and manage in those spaces to make those opportunities and lanes for students to continue their education.
I have a question, and if you already said it, so is this new, like this, so we, this is just renewing it?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think of this, it's, um, like block transfer, right? So when you are at a university or Daytona State, you know, any, um, college, this is, this is gold for a student. So I think this, because a lot of universities have this, or, um, w- we need to market this in a way? Like, if I'm a high school student and I'm told, you know, I mean, but not just the student, but to our community, like, we offer block transfer credits, like, the three credits right there, I mean, that's a couple hundred bucks, right? Um, but these are real, this is good, and I think just promoting it and letting these students know.
Absolutely, great point, and I would just add, uh, through Bright Futures, our students have the opportunity for the gold seal, which, if those are pursuing a career, not, not saying they're going to a bachelor's degree, but if you're looking for certification in a particular field, um, students can earn that opportunity for the gold seal as they're a completer and they earn their credits and they have a certain GPA, they can qualify through Bright Futures.
That's ATAs, well.
It's, it's part of that, but it's, it's not the, the main driver of that, and so as a completer, they'll have that opportunity to have a bank of hours that they can use. And it's not limited right out of coll- out of high school, so they can come back a year from now and tap into those resources that'll allow them to, with their gold seal, earn certifications and courses that would be paid through, through Bright Futures.
Yeah, and I don't think that's well understood, I think most people assume it's just for college, but it can be for trade schools.
Correct.
And it is, it is, it is for the state college, but it is towards a certification.
Right.
Not necessarily...
Because they could be working as, and I, and I know, like, that's not one of the communications.
And that is something we can definitely, um, improve the communication on, to, on Ms. Ruddy's point, to say, this doesn't have to be just to a traditional college. It could be if you are seeking out a trade.
Right, and you, you put it, like, put a dollar amount, hey, uh, you know, you hear everybody complaining about student debt, do you want to be, uh, even like welding school? I found it's like twenty-five thousand a year, I was surprised, that's pretty, that's pretty expensive, but, uh, you know, uh...
Pays well.
Right, and, but look how many of our academics who are going to, uh, the four-year college, who are graduating debt-free, our trade school students could do that as well.
Absolutely, that's what the gold seal was set by the state for through Bright Futures.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we will move on to, uh, student travel consent, nine point zero five.
So there are eight items for you today, all Flagler Public High School, one for yearbook, one for Hosa, which is their health academy, and six for track, which is, Coach Halliday is, uh, in the Hall of Fame for a reason and, and has a number of options there for us, for students coming up for the coming year, so there's eight travel consents for you today.
I have a question regarding yearbook, um, is the teacher at either Metansus or FPC, uh... Is the teacher at either Metansys or FPC being, her classroom duty is being covered by a substitute in order to do yearbook?
Typically what they have is set up in their schedule is a yearbook class, of course.
But they should never have like, let's say, social studies, English, there's a substitute, so I can go work on yearbook?
No, they have a class, in their course, they have students that apply for and are part of the yearbook.
Yeah, like an elective class.
Right. So they, the teacher of the yearbook, the supplement that they receive, they have a class that's designed specifically for the yearbook. And so they are with their students earning that, working towards the yearbook. Both high schools have that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to nine point zero.
There are two travel staff items for you today. One is for an FPC teacher who works in the culinary department. She is going to be using some of her CAFE dollars. If you remember earlier this year, we talked about at the board about how our teachers and schools should be tapping in more of those CAFE dollars that they've been earned for their programs and conferences do come into that, that setting. And so this first trip for you by Net Williams is for that. And so that's that trip.
It's paid for out of those dollars?
Out of our CAFE dollars for program that they earn. The second trip is for our new CTE curriculum specialist, Mr. Evans. Just come on board about a month and a half ago, two months ago now. He goes by fast. But this is an opportunity for him to go and learn more about his programs and offerings and bring that back to our district to help with certifications and help our students learn and grow in their space.
I'm looking at that, when I briefly looked at the agenda of that, is this, the description says, providing administrators, teachers, industry experts with an energized forum for professional development, sharing their ideas, experiences related to certification in the classroom. So are you saying this is career pathway certifications in the classroom?
It's a couple of things. One, it's going to help them with their students, but also help our staff. If you remember, most of our staff that's in this space are alt-certified. And so this kind of helps come alongside them to help them be trained in the profession of education, but also work towards their certifications.
But only Mr. Evans is going to this?
He's going to this to bring this back to our district.
But schools could elect to use dollars to attend this as well, yes.
Yes, the schools have CAFE dollars, like the one before us that had, that's going to the, you know, from FPC.
So if you could help me differentiate, you know, regarding bringing back alt-certified professional development, why is that sitting with the CTE team member as opposed to under Mr. Olet's office?
Because this person is the one that is directly working to support them. They, Mr. Olet's office through our leadership development as well as through teaching and learning, through our professional learning coordinator, will provide additional support as well. But this, this training here is going to be specifically from that lens of individuals who are providing industry certifications to, to students.
So Mr. Evans provides direct support to the secondary schools.
Okay, so you're saying these are industry certified folks who are alt-licensed to teach and he is coming in to learn how to provide, how to have industry certified people transition and understand the art of teaching?
Right.
Got you. Thank you.
And this is professional, yeah, okay.
Certification for the certified. All right, a little, little meta there, but that's.
Okay. So any other questions on this? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, so we will move on to student travel consent, nine point zero five.
Yes, and eleven point, obviously, Board, Chairman Refereeing Board, Superintendent. This eleven oh one is to send Mr. Walker to the AASPA, which is very similar to SHRM, except it's for personnel departments strictly associated with districts and school districts and cities and municipalities along those lines. He will be presenting with, along with Powerschool. And in the meantime, when he's not presenting, he will be learning as he will be attending the conference.
So he's been asked to present?
Yes. But based on our relationship with Powerschool and the work he's done standing up our application services and all the things that started from scratch.
Awesome. Is he here right now?
Um, I, I, we've got two young ones and I sent him home, told him I'm here at Flodler.
I do love his story, like, you know.
He's the man.
So, and for being asked to present, like that's pretty awesome. So I love how he got to where he is, so.
He's a Flagler Schools homegrown success.
Yeah. He was in a fifth grade play that I helped direct.
We need picture.
Do you remember his part?
Oh, yeah, he was like, he was couch potato Santa. I am sure, I have to find a recording. That would be a little present for you.
That is priceless. I love it. That's excellent.
We will love it.
I just want, kudos to him, just in general, like for, this is pretty neat, so.
It's a way to represent Flagler Schools. And we do that. So thank you for just what you're doing for them.
Okay, so we will move on to eleven point zero two. We have.
Bringing in.
Yes. Dr. Halliday back and Dr. O'Brien.
Oh, wow. Okay, awesome. What we're working on at this point was a job description. It's been a long time coming. I know Dr. Halliday and I have had discussions about this in the interim since the first day I got to HR. And, you know, just to kind of give a long story a short, okay, on this, is one of the things that you'll notice in our departments is that what we've tried to do over time is most of the departments here have been traditionally very flat, which is one leader at the top and then a lot of subordinates with no middle, middle leadership to assist with one compliance and to grow the actual employee base as far as their knowledge base. So if you just have one person at the head, there's not a whole lot of time to be a teaching leader. So if you look at where we are with this, and I won't speak much, more on this other than the fact that that's what this is attempting to do in this department. It creates what already exists or have, we've worked to create in the other departments is to put a mid-level leader that can help raise the efficacy of the folks that work below.
Is this going to be advertised when, when, what are you thinking?
It would be starting next fiscal year and grant funded.
Okay, thank you. You probably answered my question. That was my concern, is where we are in our climate and what we do not know yet at this point. So that really is, was my concern as we move into, I think it's probably, I know it's well needed. That's, that has nothing to do with it, but as far as we start looking at budget, what Patty's got to do with our baseline with the house budget at this point to try to figure out where we're going to be. But this is a grant position at this point. For how long is the grant for?
It's IDA, so right now it's a grant that's.
For, okay.
It's, sorry, I didn't hear that.
So as long as the grant funds are available to it, is what the position would be?
Okay.
But there are changes potentially that as well.
We're expecting, you know, level funding this, this coming year.
Is it a match, one hundred percent? Is it, I don't, I don't know.
It is completely paid.
Is it one hundred percent?
Yes.
Okay. Need a match, I mean, we had to put eighty-five and you, they put eighty-five and we put fifteen, I'm just using it for example, but it's all one hundred percent.
And we do have some positions that are that way where a portion of it comes out of the general funds, but this is strictly through the IDA dollars in order to service the students that those dollars are geared for.
Can you help me delineate a little bit more of what this role would do versus like the staffing specialist that hope run some of those manifestation meetings?
I'll just share a little bit about just a couple of the things this year that have been a challenge for me to be able to support. And a lot of it has to do with, as he, as Bob pointed out, instructional support for our schools. And being that I, I oversee all of the things in exceptional student education, being able to participate in some of the walkthroughs and supporting our schools and going and visiting.
Like an academic coach for the ESE.
Correct. Yes, but also being a go-to when, if we have advocate meetings or attorney meetings, we have, I, I don't want you to think that we don't have a phenomenal staff. My team is strong. They are highly capable individuals, but when it comes to being able to supervise and support and really provide that hands-on attention to our administrative team, I, I know right now, our teams, our schools deserve the very best and it is very difficult for me to get up there.
So this is a level just under UDA at that point.
And it's in a different, so everyone else in her department right now is either instructional or support. There's no one else in the professional lane. We don't have ESE program specialists in our district. And they don't have this specific masters with this, like all these qualifications?
Well, I can't say they don't have all these qualifications, but at this point in time, their role is, it is an instructional role.
And they can hire by their own, and you tap it back.
I, and I know it's grant funded, but this is so needed because, I mean, just, I, how many times, just me as like a school board member, right, or even a parent, you're, you're the one always getting the emails, like there has to be, and I know you have a great team, but there, we need more like ESE support and this is, you know, we're getting closer. But I know it is grant funded, but hopefully this is something that could really help, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, you can't do everything and I know you have a support, but we have to come to you a lot because we have a lot of children that.
And because there's nobody else under her.
Yeah.
There's nobody else who can supervise or evaluate in the department.
Yeah.
How many total, again?
I have forty-one spots.
Under you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this would start for August or would this person, potentially whoever applies and gets, would start sooner than August? Or is this July?
July, July one.
A targeted start for July one? Okay.
Wow.
So then we'll move on to eleven point two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, so this is Board approval for personnel items.
As always, since this is the workshop, it's still a changing, growing document, especially this time of year. The surveys that went out to staff have been populated as far as folks that are determined they won't be returning and folks who decided to also retire. So at the next meeting, you'll see a more complete list of our retirees and you'll get a chance to recognize them at that time. And on that list also will be the folks that have just chosen not to return, to, you know, either move to Iowa or wherever they're headed.
And as we're talking about personnel items, over in the next week, there are deadlines that we must meet contractually for any individual that we are not reappointing. And this time of the year, those individuals are often reaching out to, maybe our board members are reaching out to me. I just ask that you send those individuals back to me so we can address whatever their concerns are over the next couple of weeks because that, this information will come before you for a vote.
And I know we've heard it before, questions from community members, the surveys, so we offer surveys to individuals, you know, why you left and that's what you're saying, like, is that?
Actually, no, this was, survey I was particularly talking about was what your plan is for next year, so we can plan as far as, for attrition, who, how many spots we need to hire and what positions we'll need to hire for. So everybody in, in the district receives a survey to their email and it basically asks them, are you returning? Are you planning to return? Are you leaving? Are you planning to retire? Those are the big three.
But when they do leave, so if someone is, is putting in their notice, we do provide a survey, but it's an optional survey for them to leave, like, you know, why they're leaving and is that public record or, obviously not their name, but just in general?
Well, I mean, in general, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's a created document that we have, so, yeah, and I believe we came forward a couple of months ago and shared the current state of our, our surveys and we'll be glad to pull it together and come back again if you need us to. As we shared the last time, you get a full mix of, I mean, everybody's, life is situational, I mean, some people, we have people going out on, on leave every day to take care of, you know, ill parents or grandparents, we have people going out on maternity leave, we have, you know, the whole range of life where as we progress through with our families, all of our employees progress through life with their families and have those, those same events.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Olette.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to Academic Services and this is sixteen point zero one and we have Ms. Renee Kirkland. Resource MOU.
I don't like your calls.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Kirkland.
Thank you. Chair, Board, Superintendent Moore.
It's evening now.
It is evening now.
Oh yeah, thanks for the correction.
Just plain.
This is a individual training account agreement between Flagler Technical College and Career Source, Brevard, Busha, Flagler and we have had these throughout the years, but this is a different format than we've had previously, just like a few other things that you've seen that are a product of the Career Source Boards collaborating and coming together as one. And so, we wanted you to see what it looks like now and it's a template that is the same between all three counties and for every school that they have a training provider agreement with. And what this does is make us eligible training provider and so it allows Career Source to pay for eligible participants to go through our career programs. And it allows for up to nine thousand five hundred dollars per participant to receive funding to go through a career certificate program is, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. Those that are, those programs that are financially eligible through hell, those students must apply for that first and then this would be a secondary source of funding for the students.
And these, uh, career certification programs, those are the ones that are outlined by the governor under his, like,
Target of Occupational List, National or State.
Thank you.
And so there are a few excluded programs as of now that Career Source won't pay for and they include cosmetology and early childhood education.
Okay, so out of the ninety-five, what, what's kind of like a ballpark estimate in terms of how much that would totally pay for that particular career certification, because there's some that it won't, right?
It, uh, it would not completely pay for heavy equipment operations, that's the only one that we have, that it wouldn't completely pay for.
Wasn't it Career Source that funded the, the Road to Success Program while back?
Yes, sir.
And, um, what's, has that just still continued to be something they're not willing to participate in or?
That is a WEOWA youth contract.
Which was a, a GED program.
Correct, and that's different than the, the WEOWA adult dollars, which is what this is.
Gotcha.
And so there's only a limited number of WEOWA out-of-school youth dollars, which is what that program was funded through and they decided to channel all of those dollars into, uh, into a company that provided the services for Brevard.
I see, so they, so they, they have that program there?
And they do have a, an office here in Palm Coast, it's just a type of service, there's different types of services that are eligible to be, to be provided under WEOWA out-of-school youth, it's not just GED, it could be, um, career services in the way of, uh, interviewing skills and resume writings and things like that, which is what that particular company provides and then they work towards getting them a job, so it, in essence, for, for that contract skips the training piece of it. And it is a, works on a, a five-year contract, so we wouldn't expect to be eligible to write for that again for a while.
Gotcha, thanks for the update on that.
As long as they meet their goals, if they don't, that could be different.
Okay. All right, any questions on, uh, this MOU?
No.
From the Board, no? Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Kirkland. All right, sixteen oh two, School Choice Policy and we have Dr. O'Brien and Mr. Finelli back.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent Moore. All right, so, um, we are requesting that we adopt Policy fifty-one twenty-one in advance of the rest of our full NEOLA policy book and this is so that we can make some necessary changes to the language around how school capacity, district capacity is defined. I know there's a lot of attachments on there and part of this is because, um, this doesn't just reference into one policy from our current board policy so we were asking to remove the section of Controlled Open Enrollment from Policy five oh two, uh, point one. There's a section that lives there and we would be replacing it, um, with fifty-one twenty-one which currently you see most of that Controlled Enrollment Language in five oh two point three of our current board policy. The, the main change here is to allow us with greater flexibility to really look at our school choice protocols. Policy five oh two point one right now has us at capacity for our schools at ninety percent and that's what our Controlled Open Enrollment is set at. We're asking that we change the language for that to be annually set by the superintendent, that district capacity be annually set by the superintendent so that, um, we could allow some greater flexibility with our Controlled Open Enrollment procedures in the districts.
So just to clarify, right now, it's going on the definition of capacity that the state uses to also allow us to determine to build additional schools and your ask is that it is divi- defined each year by the superintendent at a number that's up to his or her discretion?
Yes, for the purposes of Controlled Open Enrollment.
So would that trigger, could that trigger a need to open?
Reduced movement, if you, if you lower that number, then you're saying there would be reduced movement?
We would like to increase the number.
It, it is our desire that the number be increased, um, so right now, looking at increasing the number and we would identify and bring before, um, the Board Post place on our website, what that number is each year to allow for our families to actually have choice in the school that they would like to attend. So, for instance, for us this year, right now, students are unable to go to Indian Trails Middle School. However, we believe that there is still room at Indian Trails Middle School, but your board policy prevents us from allowing the, how many of our students that are sitting in wait in order to be able to attend that school, we are not allowed to approve them because the board policy says ninety percent, so what we're saying is, we want to increase that number, but instead of just putting a number in the policy, giving me the authority to each year identify what that, um, that threshold is.
Up to a hundred percent?
Up to a hundred percent.
So, uh, however, and my memory may be failing me because it's been several months, but from the Capitol Review with Mr. Bush, I thought Belter Elementary was the only one that was in the ninety percent range and our other schools were in the seventies and eighties. So are we saying that, that percentage of, uh, capacity according to the state or according to a different? Because I know they do a little, sometimes a little bit more rigorous or making it more difficult to achieve that, uh, number, uh, so what?
So right now, the three schools that we have, um, that's impacted, that's Belter Elementary School, um, Indian Trails, as well as Flagler Palm Coast High School.
So Flagler Palm Coast High School right now is over ninety percent?
Right now, they are over ninety percent and what we are saying is that there, there is room for us to bring students in that there may not be room, you know, in three years, but today, there is room for us to educate students that want to attend those schools.
You know, I, I, I would, I would like to take a look in terms of what we're defining the room, because also, we're not expanding the number administrators, we're not expanding other, you know, kind of like, uh, additional support staff that aren't necessarily had.
We do, yes, we do, we do.
So you would increase the number of administrators?
Yes, we have, um, our staffing allocation identifies how many of each position generates by the number of students that are in the school, which is why we see, like, last school year, Matanzas High School went up in an administrator, they went up in campus security, they went up in several different areas
There's a ratio for each one of those?
Because their enrollment increased and so now they are in that window for that current, but we would make adjustments, um, across the board within a number of staff, the number of students that are in the building.
The, part of the flip side for this for me is though, many times in our small community, a school gets a reputation that it's not really based upon anything, right? So, uh, you know, uh, I worry about us also cramming more students, like, you know, when you look at what Indian Trails can handle, fifteen hundred students, should fifteen hundred, uh, middle school students be in one space, that is a little bit like controlled chaos or twelve hundred elementary schools in a building. I, I guess maybe it's my old-fashionedness, like, coming from up north where, you know, you had three hundred kids in a building, right?
And we're just not.
But I just don't know, is that, do we know that's healthy and conducive in an environment? Or are we sacrificing that somebody is assuming this, they feel this name is a Prada name brand versus, you know, faded glory or something?
No, I don't think we're making that assumption at all, I think what we're doing is, uh, two parts to you, to your point, is we are identifying, we're saying that we want to allow for families to identify the school that they want to have their child educated in and for us to be able to, allow us to be able to say yes to those individuals as they are wanting to, um, attend different school. I think that's the first part of it, is that we do have.
But are we sacrificing some of the environment for the people who are zoned there?
We, we are, I do not believe that we are, I think we have data to show where our schools, um, they are definitely larger versus some other districts, however, we have data that our schools have performed well academically over the course of years with more students in the building, but we would provide the, the, the necessary staff in order to support, but I think what is the responsibility of, um, this, the staff and this Board is to identify those schools where maybe we don't see choice happening in those schools and identify, well, what is the reason why we're not seeing that and then are we bringing programs to that school in order for those families to have something that they're wanting to choose as well? So I think that's what our responsibility is, but I think in this moment right now, our responsibility is to identify that we have students, we have families who want their children to go to many of our schools and not just these three, but for us to be able to say, we can say yes to them. So right now, and Mr. Finelli, if you would just pull up the numbers, um, quickly, we have, families are, are saying, I wanna go to school at Indian Trails Middle School, right, let's just use that as an example, but we have families that choose to go to all of our schools, but in this situation, any family, any student that wants to go to Indian Trails Middle School, we're saying no to them because the board policy says ninety percent, however, we do know and identify that we could put more students in there. We don't wanna be irresponsible and say, we're gonna take it to a hundred and fifteen percent, but we could take it to ninety-five percent, ninety-seven percent and ninety-eight percent in order to be able to accommodate the choices that families are, are looking to have.
So I, I have one thing to say here, the, you know, um, I'm all for more access and, and more options for parents, so a hundred percent, but whenever we make a change like this, whether it's a percentage, a dollar amount, a threshold, you're, you're changing a policy and I think it's important to go back to the policy when it was, when it was written and say, what was the spirit of the Board at that time to say, we needed this ten percent threshold, right? Why did they, was, did they just pull that out of the air? Uh, is that a good, sounds like a good number or was there some methodology behind it? Before we move it forward, does anybody have anything to add on that?
If, yeah, I, I will tell you, I don't, I, I believe that that was appropriate at that time and it's, and to also, Ms. Ruddy's point of, uh, being able to say, um, all of our schools are great and here you can go, we saw more students choicing into certain schools, not necessarily any, um, reason, but the times were very different where you did not have open choice the way that we, we have, um, right now, within our, within our community and across the state. And so I think that they made the decision based on what was appropriate at that time, but right now, um, I, I believe that, um, we should allow for students and families to be able to look at our schools, identify what they offer and make a decision around where they want their child to be educated.
I do feel it's responsible to reserve, um, an amount that makes it available for, you know, you might get additional students in that area, the, the demographics could change and now you don't wanna lead, especially in a school where in a K, K, K-five school where you don't wanna have a situation where you're over capacity because a apartment complex went in there and now we're gonna tell these other folks, well, now we revoke your school choice in order to save this space. I'm not saying ten percent is being an unreasonable buffer, as well as, before agreeing to this, I think one thing I would like to see is, what are the spaces we're counting as classrooms? Because when the school is built, my understanding is you designate, this is a classroom, this is a classroom, this is a classroom and from that moment on, it cannot change. So if we're talking about the capacity against that original number, is that still up to our standards today to consider that space an available classroom?
Can we invite, um, Mr. Bush to, to the table a little bit to talk about, um, our FISH report and how we go about identifying? Again, this, we, um, looking at this is to say that each year, we want to look at what that number should be, to Ms. Ruddy, to your point, that if there is a change where we're, we're unable to accommodate additional students going into that school, we have the flexibility to make that decision, however, right now, um, we have families within this community that would like to have a choice within the public school of where they educate their kids and our current policy does not allow for those families to choose us and choose a place that they want to be.
I think that's a little bit of a misrepresentation, we have a lot of choice. I would like to know how many students and how many families each year are not being able to get in to the school of choice and maybe what are the, what are those reasons, is it they applied after?
Would you like to share some?
Because I think we've asked this question before and we said it was a very limited number, in fact, we go to a lottery system and we did not have to uh, use the lottery system, if we now change the bar of what the capacity is every year, now we also put ourselves at a position where they're gonna say, well, no, they said it's full, but it's really not full or they moved the bar just because all of a sudden those students wanted to go there. I feel having a solid set number that allows for particular and responsible growth in a particular area makes it clear and transparent, you have the deadlines applied, if it runs out, we have a lottery system, that's very fair and makes sense to me, I feel like we're going to squeeze more students into a space, we're gonna compromise the environment and what's, uh, you know, add a, a little bit of a, a stressful environment to when we don't need to do that, we have the space in our hands.
We have, we have statutoryal classrooms. We have, we have statutory classroom sizes that, I mean, they're not gonna be learned.
But no, those, those statutes can now be overridden without any um, without any um.
No, no, they cannot. The classroom spaces that are identified as classroom are the spaces that we will.
I think he's talking about the student teacher ratio.
No, so I was gonna ask, and I know you're, look, is this making more like, cause so I know BPK through third is eighteen students, fourth through eighth is twenty-two students, ninth through twelve is twenty-five. So that's the um like with the fee-based schedule, so um with, with what you're proposing, would it stay within that range for like the fees that we would get from the state? And I'm talking now like budget, so that's, that's what I'm wondering, cause it sounds like it is, cause then that would be.
I thought they re, they removed the um disincentive to go against that. So yeah, I know you're saying class size amendment is seventeen or eighteen students, but they are no longer punishing districts financially by going over that.
Financially. Yes, but we, we, to the point, we need class size.
Well, this is what I'm asking. Yeah.
We need class size, and if we did not need class size, that will be brought before this board and presented to the state with a plan of how we rectify that.
So this plan is, that's off the table. You're saying that you wanna increase the capacity under our agreed upon class sizes?
No, I didn't, that's not what we're asking for.
Okay.
What we're asking for is to say currently, the board policy says that capacity is ninety percent. What we are asking for is that we are able to increase the capacity in your board policy to allow for students in this community to have choice within the school, all of our schools and Flagler County.
But capacity could mean bodies per square foot versus element, uh kindergarteners per teacher. So Mr. Bush, can you explain to us how capacity is defined? And if the student teacher ratio is included in that consideration?
Well, it may not be appropriate for. Mr. Bush is not the person to talk about capacity, but he is the person to talk about FISH.
Right.
And then we can.
Which, to my understanding, is supposed to include guidelines around how many people you can put in a space.
But FISH isn't even.
Well, let's let Mr. Bush answer the first question, cause we brought him up here to the table. Let's let him.
So s, um a lot of it's based off of student station count, which is also your classroom size. What the size of that is per student station that you have in each classroom, which gives you the total capacity.
And define, when you say student station, when was that student station count defined? Before the class size amendment, after, is it considering this is a kindergarten classroom and only seventeen kids can fit in it?
That, that.
Those are two different.
Those are two different things.
Right, so that's.
What are we, what are we trying to, what are we trying to actually get to? Do we?
What I'm trying to get to is, when we say we're gonna increase the number, are we going to consider class size in that as well as what is the capacity numbers he's referencing that allow us to build other schools? So when we say we wanna exceed capacity, first, which definition of capacity are we talking about? Are we talking about class size amendment capacity? Are we talking about just the capacity to build another school? And that, that would allow us to have first a common definition. If it's this one, this one's much more restrictive than the student teacher ratio. And to me, would allow it, would potentially allow a lot more students in that space.
Well, this would just be for existing student stations, right? We, we have seats that are not, no, there's no cheek in that seat, right? And then we can, we, we say we're gonna put a student in that seat that's, that's, that's already available, that's vacant, that is not in there. Um I, I understand that, I, I'm just trying to hear uh Ms. Ruddy's concerns. I hear two, one concern, and you can correct me if I'm wrong from, from under your, your, your input. But I hear one is that if somebody wanted, moved into that district, the choice would not allow them to, there wouldn't be a space for them. Two, that this could trigger building another school because we've reached a certain, so.
No, that's not, because I believe that we would then say no. What I'm saying is, you are going to compromise the environment for the students that are already zoned there. If we're adding more, which in some cases that are schools that are at ninety percent saying, they said we can fit ten percent more in and I don't know where we would put them right now.
But wouldn't we get?
So then if we don't also have a definition of what, what does capacity mean right now at this table? With all these people who have all this knowledge, how are we gonna make that transparent to parents when we define, yes, we have capacity or no, we don't?
I believe they keep a count though, so like.
We do, and we put it on the website and we do a rolling count on the website of what seats are available in our, in our schools.
But what, okay, so I'm gonna go back to my original question. Is that based upon the student stations? Or is that based upon, hey, this is how many current kindergarten classrooms and it's one to seventeen and so?
No, this is about student stations.
We've only got two more. Okay. And so that to me is a much more restrictive or a lenient number. You can fit more students in there. And so, I'm sorry if you have additional items to say regarding that.
It, it's, there's no one answer for me because it depends on how, what lens you're looking at, cause you're, you're asking it and there's a couple answers, cause when you get into FISH and DOE and their percentages, they're different than what they're also talking about. So it's hard to give you one answer because really there isn't one answer that answers it.
Right, but you see, so we're saying, you see how muddy this is right now? And now we're gonna say, well, we're gonna change that capacity.
Mr. Barz, you have something you want to add?
Mr. Barz, I'm, I'm not sure it's, it's not mut, it's crazy, crazy muddy, I don't think. Because we're going off on different things that not, do not matter. We're talking about, do we have seats, right? We have seats.
Yes.
We do have the seats.
Yes.
Yeah. And so we have somebody who wants to go into that seat.
Yes.
We're telling them no.
Yes.
Because of ninety percent.
Yes.
We could go up to whatever that percentage is. You just evaluate that to say, yes, we do have that.
Yes.
However, if there was someone who was in that zone.
Yes.
And we happen to be at that one hundred percent, let's just have a use that scenario. What would we do at that point? Would we have to move someone out? Or we, okay, so that's.
We would, we would not allow for students to choice into that school. So right now, to your example, which was a great example, we're sitting at ninety percent. There are additional seats. If that student lived in that zone, that student would be able to go to that school with no problem. What we're saying is to allow families to go into the schools of their choice if they do not live in that zone. And we reevaluate that every single year.
Okay, so I have one other, I have one follow-up to that. I think, if I can remember it. Um I'll come back to you, how about that? So I had it on the tip of my tongue, I apologize.
I just, it, it means additional buses, additional at one location, car rider lines, right? It's the environment of the school, time and access to library materials, resources.
But wouldn't we have that anyways if it was a hundred percent full? If it was a hundred percent full, it'd be a same number.
Only, not every school building is required to be a hundred percent.
I, I, but it said it.
I believe it's the k, elementaries are required to be a hundred percent.
But we can run all of our schools up to a hundred percent. We could, every school could be one, at one hundred percent capacity.
But, but the state says at, for a high school or can't remember which one, you can build a new school based upon this.
Yes, it would allow for us to build a new school. It would allow for us to add portables or concretables if we would want to do that. We could definitely do that.
Correct, right. But do we wanna do that? I mean, I'm already hearing from, I'm already hearing from the community, they're thinking that our schools are overcrowded already.
No, but we're not asking.
And I'm like, well, technically, we've got thirty percent more kids, so half of that school could, almost half that school could double and we'd still technically have space.
We are not asking for this board to put a school in a position that we have to add stations. We are saying, there are seats available. Your current board policy does not allow for students to, uh their families to choice into three of our schools at this time because the capacity for choice is set at ninety percent. Our request is that we increase that. If you want to increase it and we give you a number, we can do that. But what I believe would be the most responsible thing is for us to identify that it is set before by the superintendent. We can bring it before the board. We say, this is what it is. We put it on our website and we do all the things that are required for us to be do, be do, um done.
And I would just wanna make sure that the, the spaces that we're defining as a student station.
We're gonna put students in classrooms.
Because, you know, I, uh there's, there's a particular school where there's a classroom that's at one, it's a changing room off of a, off of the um.
Well, we would not have a, we would not have a, a eighteen student station um class in that classroom.
Right.
Okay, so. Can I, I do have, I do have one other follow-up. I remember what I wanted to say.
Okay, is it on the same topic?
It is on the same topic, I apologize. So my question was, with these comments that we've heard from parents, saying that they wanted to go to these schools, in your conversations with them, have they said, well, if I can't go there, then I'm gonna go to another school?
Absolutely, and we can read you those requests from them.
That's, that's what I wanted, so they're, they're going.
On this one board, just, just a moment. Uh, on this, on this particular question, I'm gonna ask the board that, you still have time to, to query staff and, 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 and review this. We're not voting on it today. I think the, the staff has exhausted what they have to give us right now.
Well, they did say they had data about how students perform with low and high numbers. I'd like to see that as well as what are.
You can look back over historically of what our school performance has been. We have had um student, um uh our student population in those school, those schools have been different historically across. I mean, when we look at where Beltar was or it, um uh it, um Old Kings was, but when we had sixth grade in there, those students, they had three hundred more kids in there, all of them.
Remfired, right, yeah, so I would appreciate um the, the person who does the deep data, if they could provide a longitudinal study on that for me.
So like, on, on this particular question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close, I'm gonna close the conversation, cause thi, this has gone on quite a bit and I think we've gotten.
Well, it's an important topic.
It, it is, it is, and I think we've got, we've got the information, Ms. Ruddy. I think that they've given everything they can give. That sometimes we, we need to do more of our research off, outside the board. I think the public has heard the concerns here. Um but anything beyond on this, cause we're just continually going in circles. So uh if anybody has a different question regarding this um choice policy, please bring it up now or we'll move on to the next agenda.
I just wanted to say, um perhaps, and you know, could this be a reason too, you know, from what we're hearing in seats? Cause we do now offer different programs at different schools, which I'm assuming didn't happen in the past. And now, like, you know, it could give it more opportunity for, I'm just an example.
That is appropriate for our high schools. Our, our elementary and middle schools do not have that, that ability.
But like three D printing at one and maybe they want that and then maybe this one, but I'm just trying to think, you know, cause there's different things kids wanna be involved in, but.
And we will share with you the data around the families that are currently waiting for a decision as to if they will be approved or not.
So we currently have sixteen students that are waiting to be approved for Indian Trails and twelve to be approved for Beltar. Um but along those same lines, we've also seen eighteen students that were approved to go to Buddy Taylor. Um all of our schools are, are, the six that are open are all having students choice into them.
And this is for next year. These are the lots.
Yes. Yes, there are just three schools that currently don't have that capability because of the ninety percent. And we're not talking about hundreds of students, but we are talking about groups of students for one reason or another who feel they could be best served within those schools, but those schools are currently closed. Even though we do have seats that we could currently educate them in, in those schools. So that's, that's what the superintendent is asking for, um not, not to get to the point where there's no capacity left. But um as Mr. uh Dr. King said earlier, they have an open seat policy. If there's a kid, they put him in it. Charters and, and uh other community schools do that. They, they offer seats to students throughout the community and they don't limit them by zone. Um and so this would help us to have the ability to uh provide seats to students in schools that, that for one reason or another feel that they best meet their needs.
I, I would say too, we, we know um that the community is asking for this because we've seen a balloon in our number of hardship applications. So these are the applications we get outside of the controlled open enrollment window and for preference that they're not true, oftentimes what's in the application is not a true hardship according to the definition, but more of a preference that they are looking to attend a different school. However, our, our policy um does not allow us to do that in a way where they can apply and we can have them start at certain windows, um and we'd really, you know, uh like the flexibility to be able to set those school choice protocols.
How many were for FPC then? You, you named the two, was there, how many were waiting to go there?
So we, we have not um included FPC in the hardship.
And we did not do that because there are other factors that have to be considered, e- especially um uh sports. And so we don't want to put our families in a situation where they're having to create a hardship or go out of their way in order for their children to attend the school that they want them to attend. But last year, I mean, we did have several hardships into Flagler Palm Coast High School.
But sports is not supposed to be a reason for school choice, right?
It can.
It can be.
It's, it just depends on our protocol.
I feel, I thought we had discussed this previously, that that is not allowed and is part of like a potential recruiting which violates.
We cannot recruit, but students can choice, if your policy allows for it, they can choice into schools for sports.
Even if there's a, a sports program at each school?
They don't have to give a reason. If, if we have a policy that allows that to happen, there need, there is no reason. It's just, I want to be here. They don't even need to say why, so it very well could be.
For the hardship paperwork.
No, for controlled open enrollment.
They might say it's for sports, but it is for sports.
And it doesn't, it really doesn't matter. It's, I'm choosing to go to this school for whatever reason.
My family works closer. All, I, you know, I catch the bus with my cousins, whatever.
We don't ask.
Oh, we see a plethora of all different reasonings behind.
Okay. All right, so we will uh move on here. We've already done sixteen point oh two earlier, so we will move on to sixteen, or sorry, sixteen point oh three earlier. Now we'll move on to sixteen point oh four. That is Mr. Reeves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I am asking the TNL team to, to come, be here in the front row or here at the table in, if there is a question.
So bringing with me today, I have Ms. Ackerman, who is our ELA six twelve specialist. I have Ms. Frank, who is our pre-K fifth ELA specialist. I have Ms. Moldun, who is our pre-K fifth math specialist. Ms. Butler, who is our K twelve social studies, and Ms. Legowski, who is our K twelve MTSS person. If there is a technical question regarding the content. So uh just to let you know, as a recap, we be, we began this process back in October. And uh as far as our adoption of instructive materials for K four math intervention, K three ELA intervention, nine twelve personal finance, and six twelve intensive reading. We've been doing and following our timeline, that's added to the board docs. And we're now at the point of recommendation materials for the agenda workshop. We've listed for you uh on the agenda, uh our items based on our rubrics, based on the information input and uh feedback from our staff and from our community members and our parents. And before you today, we have our, our option for K three ELA tier two, which is foundations for first and U fly for second. You see our tier three for ELA, K three, our K four intervention materials, our six, eight, and nine twelve. You'll see that we have aligned with HMH REED one eighty. And these also align with uh our staff's request and information, their input as far as how they were ranking the information. And lastly, personal finance with uh Ramsey's materials, Cengage being second. Any questions regarding this next step? Yes, Michelle?
Um, a couple of meetings ago, I asked if we were gonna be like advertising this. I personally don't remember seeing that. How did we get that out to the public?
Certainly.
Cause I missed it and I was upset, like why?
No, 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 absolutely. So is this through social media, through Facebook? Because there's a specific request for that, because a lot of our parents are driven by Facebook. But also on our websites and information, our public notices to our board meetings.
No direct emails though?
No, ma'am, we put it out there like we're supposed to.
And I know um like PTO and SAC meetings, they talk a lot about it, so um and then they put out newsletters and there's links. And um I, I saw it a lot.
We gave, we gave our parents access digitally as well, because that was an issue a few years ago and they asked for that. And so during the review process, we gave them digital access to view that. Not many did, but that's, it was available to them to either come into our office, which we kept records of that, or to access it digitally.
Yeah, that was my next question. How many um parental reviews and or feedback did you receive?
So uh I can tell you.
Do you want us to go down?
So we have um for our K three ELA, we had uh ten parent rubrics completed. For our uh secondary ELA, we had twenty-nine responses from the public or guardians. And from our K three math, we had uh about ten that were parents administrators from campuses. Additional, this is all additional instructional staff. And for our nine twelve personal finance, we had um review period, but uh we had no rubrics from parents for the nine twelve personal finance.
No, no parents weighed in at all?
On the personal finance.
Oh, just on the finance, okay.
Correct.
Would you at least, would you be able to remind like us the next time? There's one coming in July, right?
So, so our next set of adoptions, right, is ongoing as well. If you go to the next slide, so.
But for this process here, the board can still review what the proposal is.
That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, but if you're asking for the window, so the next window, if you look. Yeah, but if you're asking for the windows, so the next window, if you look, is, so we're going now for the, we'll come for the board for the instruction materials adoption for the twenty-seventh at the six P M. That'll open up the next thirty day window, okay? For if someone wants to contest the adoption items. And then that window closes uh with us for the twenty-seventh of June.
But we as a board can still access this like right now?
Absolutely.
How would I get to that? Because I know it's online, but.
We can absolutely push that back out to you guys. That's not a problem at all.
Flaglerschools.com and there's an instruction materials website that has access to all the materials.
Oh, we should.
I did look at it today, but I don't know.
Yeah, so you still have time to look at it.
And Ms. Chung, I know um like I sat down with Ms. Frank one um while ago and like there's a lot of res- resources there. And I mean, any, all, like a lot of these are there. So I know, like if you set up a meeting, they're happy to, I mean, we spent like two plus hours. And you will like learn a lot about the different ones and, and you, and then you can see it and read it and get the background and.
Yeah, I remember a year or two ago, I'm going through a lot of it, but I missed it this last time.
Yep, you and other families can still review it.
Still, still have access to it.
Yep.
So based upon your expertise, can you tell me a little bit about um, you know, the, the, the ones were, were defining as, as being adopted here and what's the core uh instructional strategy that stands out?
Can I start?
Sure.
So for K to three, the adoption for this program is just foundational skills for reading. So we're looking at phonological awareness and phonics. We do use Wilson's Foundations for our tier one core program. So this is actually a foundations fund and focus is the program. It's built for tier two. So it's built for the meat and potatoes of our tier one scope and sequence to be presented to students before and after they receive it in tier one. So the instructional strategy, I would say, is systematic.
And so this is the one though, that it essentially is almost a teacher script and one lesson relies on the other. Is that even from year to year? So how does fidelity and uh play into this? If you have a teacher who's gonna pick and choose or doesn't use it to fidelity, it would impact the success from one year to the next. So how are you going to um essentially ensure that that is going to be uh followed through? That they understand that the way this works is it has to be in the scripted.
I appreciate the question. So one is we're working with school administrators to kind of identify where those barriers live. If it's a certain grade level or a classroom teacher that might need to be retrained by the school-based literacy coach or myself. It is an evidence-based intervention, meaning you do have to follow the script and that is something that we are broadcasting very loudly. Um we're also training our administrators to be sure that they understand what phonics intervention should look like. So that way we're not tricked by things that just look appropriate. Um there's walkthrough tools that we're going through with our administrators and then I personally am walking with administrators and school coaches through the foundations block strategically to look for fidelity of implementation. And then the school-based administrators take it from there if they see a gap in implementation. The other thing with foundations is there are unit assessments that we gather data to see across the classroom and the grade level. And we can really determine lack of fidelity of instruction based off the unit data.
The other thing I'd add to that is each year with adoption, no matter what the actions we provide, required instruction and professional learning for our staff that impacts the curriculum. So in this situation, coming up in pre-planning, we already aligned uh these individuals be providing professionally, specifically the teachers that be providing this core instruction for tier two and tier three. And so that will be a part of that as well.
And I'm doing a lot of messaging with the school-based coaches and the teachers. As I know, Mrs. Maldun is for math as well. Helping them understand that there's absolutely a time for autonomy in our profession, but evidence-based interventions is not that time. That when we take those times, that type of autonomy, we're, we're watering down the evidence basically. And it also really just goes back to making sure they understand the why. Why does this lesson, you know, require me to do this? Why am I doing the magnet tiles? Why am I doing the multisensory techniques? All of that matters. And to a new teacher, it might just look like stuff, you know, and that's behavior management issues and things like that. So helping them understand the why and how that supports the science of reading research is, is a list that we continue to really focus on. And then the U fly, so foundations, it's actually the foundations fund and focus is the title for the tier two intervention. Those two things are both grade level specific and then about one year below for scaffolding support. U fly comes in at tier three because that can come in. It's not grade level specific, it's spelling pattern. So we use a universal screener to determine what specific patterns is just deficits are. And we can provide that instruction K to five. It's not grade level, it's skill.
In addition to that, we're providing instructional, our instructional leaders, our principals and A P's training this next coming year on literacy. See as a foundational piece and Ms. Moore's very supportive of this to help our instructional leaders in that space be able to see what's taking place and understand what's taking place so they can provide feedback that's productive for the staff.
Uh I guess from um, you know, uh reading has been uh really that highlight in the, the classroom practices and that protected ninety-minute read, reading block has been going on for a long time in Florida. There has been reading initiatives. And so that's what I'm wondering is all of this uh protected time at the expense many times, sometimes of other um curriculum, let's say, social studies. I think we've gotten better at trying to do reading across curriculums. But um, you know, those are elements that we've done like every year with every new program. So what's gonna make this one different, um especially with the need to still overcome this COVID learning loss that is specifically um, you know, plaguing us in reading?
So I've curriculum mapped the tier one foundations core program to be part of the ninety minutes. So it's not an additional, it's part of it. It handles the decoding part of the learning work, if you would, the part of um how students are not read. And then we use benchmark advance for the comprehension piece. This foundations fund and focus tier two option would live in time that schools have already determined to be their tier two reading block. Some people have a walk to intervention model, some people have the classroom teachers delivering it. So the time is not additional, it's just giving them an evidence-based resource that is proven to work. That also for the first time ever supports our tier one program instead of being something different.
So this tier two reading block that is within the ninety minutes or it's in addition to?
It's in addition to, statute requires it to be in addition to, and that time's already laid out in our school buildings for K five.
I think too, what's important to understand is this is all tied to the science of reading, right? And this, the evidence-based information Ms. Frank's speaking to allows us to have some anchored to some standards-based benchmark aligned resources that when operating with fidelity, should be moving the needle to help our students be more successful. Closes learning gaps, which we know that reading is.
It complements the tier one resource that we're already using.
Yep, for seeing.
Yes, versus, yes, we are seeing it right now.
And then teachers already, like I said, have this time carved out. There just has been choice and program that has, in our, my opinion, um not allowed us to maximize on benefits of teaching our students how to read.
Okay. So uh science of reading is the basis for these um, this intervention material. What about math? What's the core that's going on with math um in terms of the philosophy of what's making a difference for students? What's the latest on that?
So um I'll speak to the program and the fact that in the twenty years I've been in Flagler, I haven't known us to have a specific intervention program for students in MTSS. So what McGraw-Hill does is it offers a comprehensive curriculum specifically for intervention for these students. Um and the foundation being number sets. I mean, that's the foundation across the board and starting in kindergarten. So this goes, it goes topic-based, it goes levels K through G. Um and it also provides a progress monitoring that can be common across the district. So every third grade student or every third grade support facilitator interventionist can have common assessments. So now we can finally compare data um for this population of students that we haven't had, been able to before.
So you're gonna require that teachers are giving the ca- the common chapter unit assessments at the same time relatively, based upon the basic guy?
It's every two weeks. So I wouldn't say that exact two weeks, but in those two week increments, they have to have data every two weeks. And so it would be, we will, we'll be able to have a common curriculum. In the past, we have had supplemental resources that they've been able to use, a little here, a little there, piecemeal, make work. Because, you know, ideally tier three should be the tier that is filling the gaps and completing the unfinished learning. Tier two teachers are classroom teachers and they are taking that tier, so we're teaching tier one math. Now, I'm the classroom teacher. I have students that need tier two interventions. So I'm taking that current topic, reviewing, previewing that topic in my classroom, using mostly Sabbath materials, which I've taught tier one with. Then tier three is tho- that those gaps are too wide, too much unfinished learning. So now a separate teacher is pulling those kids still on that same topic as tier one, but able to really fill those gaps and go back further based on need. And this resource will be able to provide them the scaffolded curriculum to do that, the common scaffolded curriculum. We still have supplemental resources, but this would be something common created for those students.
I think what's important to understand too is do you weigh in your wisdom and the state legislature saw the need to address specifically interventions. And so if you recall, the, the state moved up the timeline for the ELA adoption for the core. In addition to asking us to, to districts around the state to focus on interventions specifically as outlined in legislation. And so uh to the credit, they have funded it and they've stood it up for us to have a systematic approach to helping students close achievement gaps in a way that I think will fundamentally shift learning for them. And I think that's the key.
And that's, this is based on the state statute for math deficiency K to four. That's where this is all coming from.
The same is true of the K to three.
Okay.
I'm glad y'all know your stuff.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming up. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next two items, uh there's nothing has changed for it. These are items that will, um that are following over from your previous meeting. But we do have Ms. Roulette here to answer any additional questions that may have come up for eighteen oh one or eighteen oh two. But there, there's nothing new to, to that.
Okay.
I saw, I saw the first flyer to come through my mailbox, so.
Good.
Yes. Do you?
Yes, the open enrollment uh postcards went out in the mail. So you should be getting them, if you did get it yesterday, then today or tomorrow.
Right.
You did.
So any questions at all? Nothing's changed? Okay, thank you, Bob. That was an easy one.
Nice.
You wore us down.
Alright, so uh we are now um at public comment. Do we have anybody sign up for public comment?
Uh Kathy Barnett.
Okay.
She's coming on football program.
Come on up. It's Barnett.
It's been a long time.
I thought this would get easier, but it doesn't seem any easier to talk in front of you guys. Hello, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Hold on. I'm gonna go quick. I know you guys are tired, but thank you.
Hey, no worries. We need to wait three hours, so.
And we're watching a beautiful sunset over there out of those windows, you know?
It's been quite lovely, yeah. It really does make a difference, the environment to have those.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
Do you wanna start the time over?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Yes, please start her time.
We're gabbing, sorry.
No, no, no. Thank you for letting me breathe. Okay, hi. I'll talk to you.
Talk to you.
Okay, thank you for your prompt acknowledgement of my emails earlier this week regarding the needs of Metanhas High School's athletic programs. Particularly the physical plant concerns affecting our football program. As outlined in the attachments I shared, there appears to be a substantial disparity in the funding allocated between the two high schools in our county. Especially concerning football-related facilities and infrastructure. I spec- uh I respectfully invite you guys to tour, to tour our athletic facilities at Metanhas High School to observe these challenges firsthand. I truly appreciate your willingness to review the matter and I look forward to continuing the conversation and working together towards a solution.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um do we have any other public comments signed up for this evening?
No, sorry, that's it.
Okay. Then we will close uh public comment and uh move on to board member requests. Do we have any more board member requests?
Yeah, one. Alright, sorry guys, I know it's been a long one, but I'll unpack this quickly. I'm bringing this back. Alright, um so I wanna talk about some zoning real quick, um some things that are happening in our county. Um within Flagler County, how does this impact us? How can we play a role? Um what should we do? Um, a lot of this conversation is taking place on the west side of our county right now in Benel, City Benel. Um I'll discuss quickly just a couple of agenda items that have recently been discussed. On April twenty-eighth, there was approval to submit and accept a grant if awarded. Unfortunately, we do not know what this grant entails. The details from this project are exempt from public record per Florida statute uh two eighty-eight point zero seven five. So this agenda item lacks some transparency. We don't really know what this grant is for. On May sixth, there uh was a request to amend the city's future land use map for one thousand eight hundred forty-two acres of land from agricultural, silvicultural, land use designations to the industrial and agricultural community industrial land use designations for what could be an intermodal facility. This was approved by the planning board to be add to the agenda. I am definitely not against economic growth. Um you know, maybe something really awesome is coming to the city of Benel. Uh but right now, we kinda really don't know uh what that's gonna be and there's a lot of concern from that side of the community. Uh we're all aware that recently the city of Palm Coast, um they opposed having uh Belvedere terminals, which would be a large fuel farm. There was even a comment from a council member stating maybe it can go to Benel. Um and that raised a lot of concern again in the community. So that brings me to my number one concern in the rezoning and a potential future, we don't really know, is the environmental safety of our schools as well as any other nearby private schools that we can advocate for. Uh if this fuel farm were to come to Benel, do we, do we know the impacts it would have environmentally? Would there be pollution, worsening respiratory issues?
So is there, is this for something that will you wanna come back as an a- agenda item topic?
Um possibly, or just a consensus? Could we just raise our concern in a similar way that Volusia County School Board did? I don't know that we need to really discuss it or just give our superintendent guidance.
Um well, I think there's a lot more information that, at least for myself, would need before we take on. I mean, thanks for bringing awareness to this, uh but I think that if you have more to add to this particular thing, if we would do that during closing comments, unless you want us to come back like as an agenda item to discuss for something, some action that we would take toward this.
Yeah, my goal is to, to just kinda support our community in um our concerns for this. And yes, if you all would like more information than I would like it to be an agenda item.
I could see where we could um take a look at in terms of the proposed area. What is the distance between that area and the others and especially Benel, uh FPC, um that kind of thing? How close is it to um, you know, water supply? Maybe we could take a look at that and that way we're prepared.
Maybe we could direct staff to, to look at it, to see, to maybe contact Volusia County schools and see wha- whatever additional information we could get on this. And I guess the, the, what we wanna know is what, what, what kinda impact this could have on our, because this is within the Volusia County uh line?
And I think it's a couple um items that is in the discussion. Um, you know, are you wanting to have um a voice into the rezoning that is being proposed? Um are you wanting to have a voice to say you don't support things of this nature? Because we don't know that that is coming specifically. I think that's what you would have to identify which uh, is it, or is it both? Is it just the rezoning of the amount of land that they're looking to rezon? Um are we?
I don't, I don't think we can say you can't rezone this. That's not our job, but um.
No, not necessarily our job, but you know, is this board concerned about the impacts of some type of, of that rezoning? Are you concerned about the impact of rezoning if it's going to bring um companies like the Belve- Belvedere Fuel there? I think those are the things we would need to know um so that we can either draft something up for you along with um the attorney, um bring more information to you. Because we can definitely have Ms. Lisa Davina in intergovernmental aid um to look into this and bring some more information as to what we know.
Yeah, we should know.
Yeah.
What is the plan and how is it gonna affect our schools?
Yeah, I think it, for an informational workshop, that we should have this. Um but, but I think what, you know, what other uh councils or school boards have done is they, they've drafted sometimes a, a, you know, a letter like this, but usually with some support behind it. And they'll ask for our, a, a resolution of, of support for their effort as a, as a neighboring government entity, right? Um if, if uh, if they, if they have something like that, I'd, I'd like to see that, to see. But the question is, is how this affects Flagler County? How does it affect Flagler schools and our community? Are we the, are we the right body to be um in, involved directly or is it the county commission? You know, who, who is, who's really uh the one that to spearhead anything that has to do with this? I, I just want an outcome. If we bring this back, is it just for informational purpose? What action should we be thinking that we're gonna take with this information?
I'm super like way ahead of this, but it's because I don't wanna wait until it's happening.
Just kinda raising the red flag saying, hey, just take a look at this, something's gonna be happening.
Can I get a clarification, are we saying that we are wanting, are we're concerned about this particular project or are you using this as an example?
This is an example, this was a last year, it, they tried to go to Volusia County.
Correct.
City of Palm Coast has now denied it.
And they voted against it last night in, in Benel.
No, they voted against it over um the other side of town, um.
A city council I think voted against.
Yeah, the city council last night in Benel voted against it as well.
Well, Benel did too?
I don't think it was on the agenda, no, the mayor. No, it wasn't on, what they did was they rezoned the eighteen hundred acres in Benel.
Oh, this is a, okay, now I know what you're talking about.
And we don't know what's going in there.
Okay, so, so you're talking about that rezoning to industrial in Benel?
There was nothing passing there.
And you're saying, this is in Flagler County.
No, the rezone, it's because it's a private.
Okay, so this is just, now I understand, this was just to say an example of.
So we can clear the luncheon and uh for the next meeting, right?
Well, I, I think we, we, we would, I think everybody in the community would like transparency on that. Uh I, I think that's something that we need to talk to the Benel um council and, and say, you know, what information can you give us? Uh but that's a, that's a community effort, I just, I, I.
But to Mr. Barr's point, did it pass the rezoning?
And what we will do is we will.
I'm not sure, I don't, I haven't, I don't know that answer to that.
We will have Lisa Davina in intergovernmental to look at what, if it did pass or not. And bring this board information um on what the process they're taking right now so that you can have that update. She will send that information to you in an email, but we will add it to a future board meeting for her to be able to provide any update of what we know.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just don't understand.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay, but it's a good thing to, to shine some light on here, um any other board member requests?
Yeah, I would like us to explore potentially um reviewing a uh and setting a policy for display size versus distance uh in a classroom. Um we're in the process of converting some of uh what we're using to display the majority of our educational content. To eighty-five inch screens, some of them were seventy-five inch. I think, you know, here in thi- this building, they've constructed the rooms in such a way where it was thoughtfully set up. So that the distance from the display to the back of the room, right, is not good. But in some classrooms that were not built around kind of this new display feature. Um I would like to ensure that the students sitting furthest away from the room. And that the instruction in terms of students being able to share uh their work on that display does not slow down the educational process. But I think to start is to review the possibility of creating a policy of what is the minimum display size? Based upon the distance away from um the display in the room. If that makes sense. And the second item is to uh explore a discussion regarding setting a policy on staff transfers. During the last quarter of the school year, uh away from schools that potentially like Title One schools that might have a difficulty. Uh eh finding a replacement and or the student scores, you know, are super critical at that time of year. We're having inter uh county transfers uh that then are leaving other schools with long-term subs. And if they are struggling to meet the state assessment requirements, it's not setting them up for success. And putting principals in the seat of being the bad guy to say yes or no.
Um my recommendation for the display versus distance is that we bring for um Mr. Deesing and his team at a later meeting. To um have a discussion with you about what operationally we do and how we um attack this. And then that the board will then identify if this is something that needs to be policy. Um versus is this something operational to the, to the staff transfer? Um that is something that needs to go through bargaining as staff transfer is the language that is in our contract. Um um with our, uh for both, for both units. It is a um, an area where we negotiate. And so um as we go into negotiations in the future, um this board can identify what some priorities are. That you would like for us to um um have as we bargain for the upcoming years. Where staff transfer is a part of um our contract.
Okay, we'll, we'll add that to the list. Um and so uh I do have one board member request this evening as well. So I, I've been contacted by um several parents, some in the time passed and then felt like maybe those issues were evolved, resolved and. Uh but I, I've gotten a few more recently and it, and it has to do, it has in regards to do with uh F P C athletics. And some of the, the players um that are on the team that feel that uh in some ways that they, the, the athletes are not being treated. Um in, in a, in a way that um their parents feel should be with certain language and. Uh and sometimes maybe demeaning um responses. Um and uh unfortunately, they feel that if they come forward that they would. Uh their student would, there'd be some sort of retaliation and um they will not come forward. Um and, and write statements or do that for that reason, so. Uh this is not normally a, a, a way that I'd like to deal with this, but as a representative for these uh families that, that are, that are afraid to come forward. I feel it necessary for it to be at least uh make you aware of this concern by some parents. Um and I would just ask that we look into this to see if there's any validity into these complaints. And you know, I'll, I'll discuss more with you um at a, at a later date, okay? Um so that uh leads me to um upcoming uh board topics, we've, we have a list.
I have a request.
For uh. Okay, yeah, the board member requests are, are, which is fine, wh- the upcoming ones are just to have a.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were.
But if you still, we still can go back and have, and add your.
Yeah, I was just waiting my turn, so I wanted to just.
Sorry, I, I moved on without knowing that, I apologize, go ahead.
That's okay, no worries. Um I just wanted to just add, so when we have time to um what Ms. Kathy was discussing and again, you know, with emails. Um just if maybe we can set up time with Mr. Cory Bush, maybe setting up just discussion over the documents that were sent. And just clarification um on Metanis High School versus F P C fund allocations. Just when we have a minute, just to go over the documents that they all put together and sent to us, just, I think that would be good to have. And then um I just, I don't want us to forget about the health initiative incentive for next year, so just wanna keep that on the, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, um we will now move on to upcoming board topics, I know that Superintendent Moore has a running list of those, uh so we're good there. Um and uh closing comments, do we have any closing comments, starting down with uh Ms. Ramirez?
Well, um so I just wanna say thank you for Metanis High School. Um so thanks to Metanis High School, uh they have had a lot of growth going on, Shark Tank and um you know, Bell Terrell Elementary School. They had a really wonderful um activity for all the students and families, so and I appreciate all the staff, the grants. Those things that I learned with the budgeting team, so Ms. Carrie, I think she's gone, but she spent a lot of time and um I think, I just want the public to know that. There's a lot of grant money that we have to go out and get and in Flagler Schools, we are doing that. And it's going all back to the students and to resources. And you don't realize it until you really look at the numbers and then you ask the question, so I was just very impressed, so. And uh including a national school lunch assistant grant for kitchen supplies for Benel Elementary School. I mean hundreds, thousands of dollars like, so I just wanna say, great job, so thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief, uh obviously this space that we're in tonight, um so pleased to uh uh have our meeting here. It was a great idea by you all, but think about this, it had a, uh several transitions in school boards. It had transition, this uh building project had transitions in leadership, uh transitions in superintendents. Uh but uh you can see that when there's a common vision, a common mission. Uh as well as a high standard of uh quality in terms of all of these people coming to do what's really right for students. We come out with something amazing and um I've just been really impressed with this space, the thoughtfulness in the layout. Uh I know that may, maybe some people don't really notice the small touches that from an instructional point uh really stand out. Uh but even just in this space today, anybody can a- appreciate the open light. Uh it clearly plays a difference in uh in your demeanor and your ability to stay focused, I think that's really important. But this is a testament to the cross collaboration and even when you have to have difficult decisions, right? Uh that go into these, right, and hard conversations. When it's all about having that north star that we're all aligned with, really uh comes out to something beautiful. So congratulations to uh all of the leadership, all of the um facilities folks. All of uh the finance people finding every dime and figuring out very creative ways to ensure that we can bring in uh this project within budget. It's uh kudos to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so just a couple of things, I'll echo what you both have said about this building and the work that everyone has put into it, just phenomenal. So I just really appreciate uh what they've done, I won't say anymore about that, but I know there's a lot of hard work and I think Ms. Bozeman is glad she's done with all that for right now. I wanna thank our community members for participating and being a part of that, we talked about stakeholders and how important that is and, and the relationships that we all have with different people in our community. I think that's what makes Flagler Schools so special. I've said this time and time again, and I'll continue to say it, that I believe that, and I know this, that we are on the cusp of doing some really, really great things in this school district. I do get frustrated, I'll be honest with you, I try not to look at this stuff online. Because it is um, it is frustrating because if there are issues that I feel like that people should come and talk to us about, they should come and talk to us about it instead of being keyboard warriors. And one comment that I heard this, saw this past week that really got under my skin, and I'm gonna just say it, cause I hope people will hear it. Is if you think that Flagler Schools is corrupt, for whatever reason, I expect that they would come to one of our school board members. And come and ask us to say we need to look into something like that instead of making remarks. That I'm not sure if they have basis or merit or not, but I would really like for them to be able to share that with us because if there is corruption, we would root it out. I would make sure that and I'll be the first one to bring it up if we need to. So if it's out there or someone needs to make that statement, I surely hope that they will come to one of us and say, and show us what that issue is. We have some phenomenal people that are here doing some good things, are we perfect? Absolutely not. We're trying our best to try to do the right things. Ms. Kathy, I wanna thank you for your email and I look forward to working with you on your topics that you've brought up, not only this one, but others in the past. And I thank you for your involvement of what you do in this school system, so thank you very much and look forward to working with you on that. The other part is, I just was overwhelmed by joy about the phenomenal students that we have and how we were able to recognize them for their scholarships. And going and honking horns and all that kinda stuff.
I can't believe that was the same week it gets.
It's just, the look on some of these students faces as you roll up and give them a scholarship and some of them have had multiple scholarships. And so the, the great work that we're doing in this district. We want to be the choice for all of our students to come and be a part of Flagler Schools. We wanna be that way, again, we need to have a level playing field. And I know that's been said today, probably somewhere else, but I agree with that wholeheartedly that we can continue to be the, a great choice. As long as we're doing the right things. And we keep moving forward in that north star that you're talking about, trying ser- servicing our students and servicing our families in this district. So, I'll yield back any time I've got, thank you.
You know, I saw that comment and I have receipts that our district has responded to that person in the past, so I'll just say that, it does get frustrating, you know. We have to still be available to our constituents, um but not everything's truth out there. Um yes, thank you, I'm so glad we had a chance to come and see this facility. Um it kinda reminds me of like an early two thousands movie when you saw a high school and it's like, I wish my high school looked like that. It, it, it's beautiful, um so thank you, I know a lot of whole, a lot of hard work has gone into this, um I'm glad we can be here today and I hope everybody has a good night.
Yeah, and I, and I, it just, you know, I, it's sad we have to discuss it, but it, it, it's really something that needs to be said to the community. Um you know, when you put stuff out there like that, negative things, um and make statements of corruption, things like that. Um thi- this does not help the effort of education in our community. I said, because number one, it's not true. And like Mr. Barr said, I guarantee you that any one of these board members, we will, we will hold anybody accountable that's involved with corruption or anything like that. That's what our job is and we will fight for our community, we will fight for our students, we will fight for our parents and we will fight for our faculty. Uh we are, we, we, we cut, we cut, we're facing in, we're coming into a environment here where we are another choice. We are a comp, we are in competition and that is okay and I, I welcome the competition, right? But you know what, if we're in competition, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna take the slander of our organization. Now, when we get it wrong, we will take the hits, we'll be the first one to admit it. But we're not gonna take these slanderous attacks on our school district. It is uh, uh, cause that is attack on our students, on our parents, on our faculty, our teachers, and it's not merited. And enough is enough. We are doing a great job and everybody uh in this organization works hard every day to deliver the best education for your students. Your school board works very hard to deliver the best that we can and give all the tools and resources that we can to the superintendent to lead this school. And I am confident that we are reaching great heights and we will continue to communicate the truth. So I ask you, community, reject the lies, come here and see it for yourself. And to, in a transitioning, come and see this building, schedule a tour, volunteers, you have a badge, get over here, right? Uh if you're, if you're just a member of the community, you can access this building, we will make it available for you to tour. See uh what, what years of work and time and effort. Um and I just wanna shout out to Mr. Coats and Mr. Bush, I mean, they worked uh very hard. I mean, I, from the beginning, I remember going through the bidding process and what a challenge, you know, who do we pick, all that, right? And, and it, it was not easy and you know, we, 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 we look at, we look at the promises and, and, cause we're, we, we hold the, if it doesn't go right, it's on, it's on us, right? And they made a costless promise, we choose the best country and, and I, I, I believe we, we chose the right one, cause they, 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 they delivered, right? Um so again, just a, a, a joyous day um to see something that was a vision in renderings, blueprints. And then to be able to sit here on the ribbon cutting day and hold a meeting, what an amazing day it was. So thanks to everybody, our community stakeholders, our elected officials, our building administrators, thank you for coming out today and celebrating with us. And I will yield to Superintendent Moore.
The, I know that the game, the softball game is very intense right now, it is tied the bottom of the seven. So if you have time, please go by and cheer our students on. But um to sum up all that you have shared, each board member has shared, I think it really just sums up perfectly into our guiding principle. Cause, principles, cause that's what we're working towards um every single day, so I will read those and then I will yield my time. Children first, trust and respect for all, empower others, teamwork, excellence, quality and consistency, commitment to individual needs and get to yes.